Good evening, everybody. It's 6:00. I'd like to call this meeting to order. We will start by hearing an invocation led by Councilmember Fugit, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilmember McKenzie. Please rise as you're able.
As we come here tonight, assembled to do the work of the city, please be with us. Let us have open hearts, open minds, and be respectful and tolerant as we go through what is a packed and full agenda. Thank you for all the people who worked to make our city a better place, be they employees, volunteers, and just people who love Knoxville. Guide us in our deliberations. Amen. Stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Johnson, would you please call roll?
Councilwoman Fugit?
Here.
Councilwoman McKenzie?
Here.
Councilwoman Parker?
Here.
Councilwoman Ryder?
Here.
Vice Mayor Roberto?
Here.
Councilwoman Singh?
Here.
Councilman Smith?
Here.
Councilman Testerman?
Here.
And Councilman Thomas? All present. Mayor?
Thank you. Item four, is there a motion on the minutes from our last meeting?
Move to approve.
Motion made to approve and second it. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item is, are there items to be withdrawn? Councilmember Parker?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to make a comment, or I guess a point of order. I'd released a state to make a motion to move a resolution under 11(c) to the beginning of our agenda. As I was preparing for this meeting, I noticed, under City Council rules, Rule Number Two, it's in Section 7.5-63 of the code, under our regular order of business, a resolution setting a date of a public hearing would appear under this section that we're currently in, Announcements and Extraordinary Matters. However, we have three resolutions on our agenda pertaining to the same issue, and I feel like just having conversations through community members about the differences of those resolutions has been enough, and that changing our order of business may overcomplicate our conversation today. So I just wanted to let my colleagues know, and let the public know, my reasoning for not making a motion to move Resolution under 11(c) to the beginning of the agenda, even though our rules state that that is the proper order of business when setting a public hearing.
Thank you, Ms. Parker. Are there any items to be withdrawn? Councilmember Ryder?
Yes, I believe 10(b) needs to be withdrawn.
Item 10(b), you're making a motion to withdraw item 10(b). Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion to withdraw item 10(b) carries. Is there another motion to withdraw, is there another item to be withdrawn? Councilmember Fugit?
No.
No? Okay. Are there items to be postponed? Councilmember Fugit?
Thank you. Mayor, I would like to move that we postpone item 9(c)'s second reading until July the 25th. I'm asking for four weeks rather than two, because next week is the 4th of July, and I don't think that gives a lot of time. But when we last discussed this item, there were questions, concerns, and I myself would like a little more time to dig into this, so.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion has been made to postpone item 9(c) to July 25th. It's been made and seconded. Councilmember Thomas, do you have a question?
Yes, I think the motion to postpone was well taken, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Ryder?
Yeah, so my question is, is 9(c) also tied to that? Would they both be postponed, or am I?
Yeah.
You want to amend your question?
Sorry, yes, I'm in my motion to 9(c) and (d).
Okay, there's a second. Okay, so the motion on the floor is to postpone until July 25th, items 9(c) and (d). Any further questions or discussion about this motion to postpone? Councilmember Parker? Do you have a question on this motion?
It was the same.
Okay.
In making sure that you...
9(c) and (d).
(c).
Okay, does everyone understand the motion before you? Any further questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, those two items are postponed until July 25th. Are there any other items to be postponed? Okay, are there any items requested to be added by motion? Is there a motion on the consent agenda?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made to approve and second it. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Good evening. I want to share with you a couple of updates with my mayor's report. First, I want to thank everyone, council members and members of the public, for coming out to last Monday's Juneteenth parade. It was dry for the first part, and then the storms came, but I think we all had a very celebratory mood, because this was a great occasion, and we're so glad that this is an official holiday in our city and in our country. So appreciate everyone who worked so hard to make the parade success, including our summer in the city interns. I think some of them are here today. Thank you all for being part of that parade and making it so special. I also want to thank the other members of the city who worked on that parade and helped us with the cat bus and everything else. Also wanted to mention, I just, right before, City Council had the opportunity to attend the retirement reception for Ronnie Chandler. I know Councilmember Fugit was able to attend that as well. Ronnie has been a huge asset to our community as the leader of Project Grad. I've known her, in my capacity, as a school board member and board member of Project Grad for 10 years, and it was just really wonderful to celebrate her legacy, which is the Project Grad scholars who continue to thrive and take on leadership roles in our community. So I just thought that was a great way to kick off this evening's activities, remembering the many people who are problem solvers and working hard to invest in people in our community. Ronnie Chandler is one of those. Also wanted to mention a couple of events coming up. This Friday, the Knoxville Fire Department is hosting its annual awards banquet. We will recognize the hard work and accomplishments of our firefighters. It's 6:00 PM this Friday at the Jubilee Center. Councilmembers, we hope you can join us, and I want to congratulate, at this meeting, all the men and women who were being recognized. Also, as we all know, right around the corner is 4th of July. City offices will be closed on Tuesday, but we are, of course, excited to bring you our festival on the 4th at World's Fair Park. This is a free, family-friendly way to celebrate the holiday, complete with paddle boats, mini golf, food vendors, the fountains, and of course, a performance by the Knoxville Symphony Orchestra as fireworks light up the sky. Events kick off at 5:00, with fireworks around 9:45 PM, and we hope to see all of you there. And Chief Sharp, aside from the City of Knoxville fireworks, are there fireworks allowed inside the city limits?
No, they are not allowed inside the city.
Okay, so please remember not to do fireworks on your own. Come enjoy the free, beautiful fireworks that we provide as a city. And finally, I wanted to announce some good news, that we got a grant from the Federal Transportation Administration. We just found out earlier this week that we are going to get a $3.6 million grant for low or no emissions buses and bus facilities. So this money will allow us to finish the Transit Center's overhead charger project, and will allow us to put funds toward route charging infrastructure. So this is a big step as we continue to electrify our fleet, and I want to congratulate Isaac Thorne and the entire CAT team on winning that grant. And now, that's it for my announcements. I just want to go over, as I always do, the rules of decorum. Those who wish to speak either to a specific agenda item or during public forum should sign up with Mr. Johnson, our city recorder, ahead of time. And also a reminder that council rules state that up to three people each may speak for or against an agenda item. Right now, there are many more than three signed up to speak on various items, so I encourage those who have signed up to consider collaborating and getting the get-together and nominate the best speakers that you wish to speak to in order to conform with council's rules. Please do not use profanity, and when speaking to specific agenda items, please remember to stay on topic. Those who fail to adhere to these rules may be ruled out of order and asked to step away from the podium. For those who are listening, please note that you may not disrupt a public meeting from the audience; those who do may be asked to leave. Thank you in advance for following these rules, and that concludes my mayor's report. Are there any reports from council members? Councilmember Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. Speaking of an efficient fleet, I wanted to give another update on CAT reimagined. If council will remember, this process started with an initial draft based off the KTA Board's request to focus 70% of the fleet on frequency and 30% on coverage. The result of that draft was the following improvements. Within 45 minutes, Knoxville residents would have 16% access to more jobs, 15-minute service for 80% of people, Sunday service, continued paratransit service, more job access for low-income people without a car, and residents of color. 74% of the public has reviewed it and opined that the new network is better or neutral than the existing network. So we're not fully reimagined, but that's a brief update. From that draft, there was 10 key issues that were raised. So some of those were the 21 bus, Pleasant Ridge, O'Connor Center, Broadway Towers, and access to the juvenile court and public defender's office, among others. The consultant and CAT staff have done a great job of incorporating all of those changes in response to the public at a cost-neutral budget. So that final draft will come before the KTA Board in July, and then we will send that back out to the public to see if we improved it from the first draft. So we're not fully reimagined, but we're closer. So I wanted to give that update. And the second one is related to the Urban Forest Master Plan. So for the public maybe not be aware of this, the city's embarked on an Urban Forest Master Plan that includes recommendations that will be summarized in October by that committee. So those recommendations will come before the public for feedback. There was tremendous feedback for that original plan, but those recommendations are planned to be presented to the public in late fall, early winter, around October, November. So look out for that at that time. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember McKenzie?
I'm sorry to interrupt you here.
Oh, you were not, didn't mean to have your line. Okay. Any other reports from council members? Moving right along to item 8(a).
8(a) is a resolution confirming the reappointment of Laura Cole, Matthew de Barledeleben, and Suzanne Taravella to the Design Review Board.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made to approve and second it. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
8(b) is a resolution approving the reappointment of Joe Dawson and the appointment of Karen Hawthorne and Wes Stowers to the Metropolitan Knoxville Airport Authority.
Move to approve. Motion made to approve and second it. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
9(a) is an ordinance amending Sections 4-78, 4-85, and 4-95 of Chapter 4 of the Knoxville City Code so as to set fines for sales to underage persons, clarifying where remedial plans are delivered and establish a process to appeal.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made to approve and second it. Any questions or discussion? Vice Mayor Roberto?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to, again, compliment our earboard chair for bringing this forward. I think many don't realize that for many years now, when you had a first offense for serving to a minor, you had no fine, and this is going to make there be a fine. And we take it very seriously, underage sales, and I'm very glad to see this happen. So I want to commend my colleague for bringing this forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
9(b) is an ordinance amending Chapter 17, Article 2, Division 4, Section 17-98 of the Knoxville City Code, giving authority to municipal enforcement officers in the Neighborhood Code's Enforcement Division to tow and impound any vehicle in violation of City Code on public property.
Move to approve.
Move to approve.
Motion made to approve and second it. Any question? Was there a second? Did I hear a second?
Second.
Okay. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
9(e) is an ordinance to close Opal Avenue between its intersection with Gore Road and its eastern terminus, and authorizing the mayor to execute quitclaim deeds to the adjacent property owners. Cherokee Country Club, applicant 2nd District.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made to approve and second it. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
9(f) is an ordinance to change the base zoning classification of property located Zero Central Avenue Pike from AG District to RN6 District, leaving all special purpose and overlay districts unchanged. Crescent Bend Development LLC, applicant 5th District.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made to approve and second it. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
9(g) is an ordinance to change the base zoning classification of property located Zero Cheryl Boulevard and a portion of property located at 517 Frank Gardner Lane from CG2 District to O District, Land Development Solutions, applicant 2nd District.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made to approve and second it. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
10(a) is a resolution approving an appeal by John Holmes of the Board of Zoning Appeals' denial of a request for six variances at 2230 Laurel Avenue in the RN5 zoning district, 1st council district.
Okay. The petition?
Mr. Holmes.
Okay. Is Mr. Holmes here?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Holmes, you have up to five minutes, and you can have up to three people speak in favor of your appeal, and then there's, up to three people can speak in opposition to your appeal, and then council will have a discussion, and if they have any questions, they can pose them at that time. So you'll start by stating your name and address for the record, and you'll have up to five minutes.
Thank you. John Holmes, 5914 Gray Gables Drive. Can they show the presentation, or does everybody have a picture? Do people have pictures of what?
They have all the information already.
Okay, great. To kind of summarize what I'm asking for, is I want to build parking, because Fort Sanders is, it has an incredible shortage of parking. It just gets worse and worse. The hospital's getting ready to lose 400 spaces on 19th Street. You know, all these new developments on Lake Avenue are bringing a big parking deficit as well. So I'm asking for to build four driveways instead of two. So currently, kind of when you look at the two different site plans, the first one is what I'm proposing. The second is what is allowed with basically just two driveways. And this property is a very steep property, has 22-foot of elevation change from north to south. So what that means is the parking needs to be located towards the top of Laurel Avenue to meet the right proper slopes. And currently, two driveways are allowed, 30-foot wide each, so that's a total of 60-foot. I'm asking for four individual driveways to divide the units up better and to meet with, work with that grade challenge. So I'm asking for 12-foot more. That's just 20% difference on the driveway width. But that also creates four extra parking spaces, so I'm not going to be pushing out any occupancy or any kind of parking concerns over to the neighbors. Secondly, the concern brought up at the last variance meeting was the side setback from the building to the driveway. If I go with the existing structure, the setback is one foot. With what I'm proposing, it'll be at five foot. So it's lessening that clearance for cars. There'll also be sidewalks that'll be constructed at my expense, the city will then have, which creates an additional seven-foot buffer and an ADA pedestrian access along 23rd. Currently, there are no streets, sidewalks along 23rd. In terms of building setbacks, I'm asking for what is less than currently exists. The building there has been condemned since 2014. It has a violation list of about two pages long, many structural issues, flooding, ceilings. It really just needs to be torn down. The existing building is one foot from the property line, and if I retain that existing building, I can build to the one-foot line. But I'm asking to push it back to five foot, which is lesser than what is already there. On the rear, I'm asking for a five-foot setback, and this only affects the last 20-foot of the building to get some additional parking. 80% of the building will be at a setback of six and a half foot, which is one foot more than the existing structure. The net result is a building that is three foot narrower than utilizing the existing structure. And then finally, the other variance is, I would like to build six units instead of four. Four units are allowed. Size is not regulated. I'm building less than the lot cover as it's allowed, but there's been a lot of studies on the missing metal, and I think the City Council started to, they had a study that's been commissioned to look at why more smaller units are not being built, and this is one of the reasons why, is because the zoning code is overly strict. So by building six units, I'll have less tenants and less density. If I build four, you know, there's going to be more tenants, but there needs to be a better, more common sense approach to unit mixes, to where we can offer more affordable options to people, and the building structure will still remain the same, but it's a better mix of units. So I mean, I do hope they'll take those up in the future. To summarize, what I'm not asking for is an increase in the building size. Zoning actually allows a building that's 15% larger than what I'm proposing. I'm not asking for an increase in any density, it's actually a reduction in tenants, and I'm not asking for an increase in height. Zoning allows all these things currently. Thank you.
Thank you. There's one person here to speak in opposition, Alice Basler, Basler. Ms. Basler, if you could come to the podium and state your name and address for the record. Are there, are there two people to speak in opposition, or you're just in support? Because, okay, you'll have up to five minutes, and if you could start by stating your name and address for the record.
Thank you. My name is Alice Basler, 2017, Pondros Lane, Maryville, Tennessee, 37803. I represent 11 owners that all own on the street in the fort. According to KJIS records, the property was purchased for $400,000 in 2023. The proposed plan is to demolish the existing residence and construct six units. The existing lot size does not support a density of six units, and in fact, not a single residential district supports the density of townhouses proposed. According to Articles 16.3, 1.8, 1.4, on variances in the city zoning ordinance, any variance granted under provisions of this section must be the minimum adjustment necessary for the reasonable use of the land. It's difficult to understand how a variance to increased density that is not permitted is a minimum adjustment necessary for reasonable use. Also, according to Articles 16.3, 1.8, 3, on variances in the city zoning ordinance, mere loss in value to recoup investments on a piece of land does not justify a variance. There must be a deprived use of land. The existing structure the applicant plans to demolish is addressed and fronts along Laurel Avenue. This is consistent with the established characteristic of development facing along the southern block of Laurel Ave, between 23rd Street and 22nd Street. The proposed development seeks to change the established development pattern in order to construct six units that will then be addressed and fronted along 23rd Street. This is, again, an effort to fit six units on the parcel. Additionally, the entering and exiting of multiple vehicles on a hill has the potential for many traffic accidents. Topography on this property is similar with existing adjacent properties along the block of Laurel Avenue and those throughout Fort Sanders that have been previously developed. The existing residence that is to be demolished demonstrates how topography did not deprive prior development of reasonable use of the land. On a side note, we have personally redeveloped 24 properties in the fort without running into the need to seek any variances. Topography is similar throughout the neighborhood we own from the 23rd block to the 13th Street of the fort. They are fully leased and profitable. Finally, we are not opposed to redevelopment of the property or the proposed use. We only ask that it be developed in proportion with the existing neighborhood and within its current zoning. I ask on behalf of the owners and the neighborhood that you hold this applicant to the same standards as the rest of the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Holmes, you can have up to a two-minute rebuttal.
Oh, thank you. I understand their concerns. I think my plan addresses most of those things, because I'm asking to build less density than what is allowed. But I also think it's a hypocritical argument, because when you look at the pictures in the packet, and the houses that they own, like for instance, this is the one on 23rd, has three illegal parking spaces added on the right, four illegal parallel spaces. The other property they own on the other side of Laurel has 10 units, which also wouldn't meet. So there's a lot of exceptions in Fort Sanders. There is very high density there, but by building smaller, more efficient units, it actually enhances the neighborhood. And what you're seeing in Fort Sanders is a growth of very large unstable units, where eight, 10 bedrooms are being built per unit because of this unit restriction. And it's bad for the neighborhood, it creates crime, it creates problems for the police. You need to have smaller, more manageable units, which are going to help the neighborhood. So, you know, I think it's, if it's safe for their cars to back out into the street, it should be safe for my cars to back out on the same street. I don't think it's any different whatsoever. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, council members. Mr. Councilmember Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank both Mr. Holmes and Ms. Basler for what you have created in the fort. You both add quite a bit of character and much-needed housing in that area. Unfortunately, because this is a BZA appeal, we weren't able to talk before, so we're going to have to do this as a body here. Along those lines, Mr. Frost, it's always important, I think, to refresh what we're voting on and the BZA hardship requirements. Could you explain that again?
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Smith. One of the speakers did correctly identify Section 16.3, variances under the zoning code. I'll briefly go over them. The purpose of a variance process is to provide a narrowly circumscribed means by which relief may be granted from unforeseen applications of the zoning regulations of the code that create practical difficulties or particular hardships. Then you look at the standards. Variances will only be granted where special circumstances or conditions, such as exceptional narrowness, topography, or siding, fully described in the findings of the board, do not apply generally in the district. Second, variances will not be granted to allow uses otherwise excluded from the particular district in which requested. Mere loss in value does not justify a variance. There must be a deprivation of beneficial use of the land. Any variance granted under the provisions of this section must be the minimum adjustment necessary for the reasonable use of the land. The granting of any variance is in harmony with the general purposes and intent of this code and will not be injurious.
code and will not be injurious to the neighborhood, detrimental to the public welfare, or in conflict with the general plan for development. Thank you.
Thank you. In our packet, there was a discussion around side setbacks and this development. Mr. Ehrens, could you come forward? Thanks for being here. In the BZA meeting, I believe Mr. Holmes mentioned that the existing house could be rebuilt or redeveloped in its current position and size, and the side setbacks would not be needed, but there would still be need for variances for the driveway either way. Can you speak to that?
Sure. The existing driveway is legal and would not need to be, there would not need to be any variances to continue using the driveway that's there already.
Okay. And it's generally my assessment that the reason that this requires these variants, this development concept, is that the desire for six units and four driveways as opposed to the four allowed units, is that correct?
That is correct. I'm sorry, I'm Peter Ehrens, Director of Plans Review and Building Inspections.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson.
We're all old friends by now, thanks. Okay, thank you for that. I'll pause to let some of my colleagues ask any questions, if you have any.
Any questions or comments from council members aside from Mr. Smith? Okay, council member Singh, and then Ryder.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
When you were stating your case, you talked about this being, that you're trying to address middle, missing middle housing and that this would be affordable. What type of rent are you talking about?
For student housing, it's typically going to be for a one-bedroom, two-bedroom unit. It's probably like in the 1,200 range for new construction is typical. Kind of what I was talking about before is what you're seeing is through this unit limitation, you're seeing eight-bedroom units, which are $10,000 a month. And no one is building one, two, three-bedroom units because of this. And so if you look at that concept, I could still build four units, and I could build four eight-bedroom units, 32 beds, but I don't want to do that. I want to build smaller and not create, push out that traffic problem to the rest of the area. We need to have a smarter unit mix that's being developed. And the hardship from Mr. Frost's question was, is the terrain? There's a 22-foot elevation change across the property. It drops off very steeply at the back towards the alley, which means that parking needs to be shifted towards Laurel. That's the key thing for the hardship.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Ryder?
Yeah, so, Mr. Holmes, I've gone back and reviewed in our packet the BZA discussion there, and I'm trying to find it in here right now because I don't want to miscite it. The discussion there, you were specifically asked what the hardship is, and you're citing the topography, but what was said there is that the topography didn't, the topography didn't stop that house or any of the other houses from being built. The bottom line is the variances are to do something different. Not to do, so a variance, the confines of the law that we have to work within are that a variance is granted if you have no use of the land. I.e., the topography of the land keeps you from building a house or building it within the amount of land that you have. And what there is, is a house. It's, a variance is not designed for us to answer, process is not designed for us to answer conversations about missing middle housing and other things that you've cited. I understand what you're saying. But a variance and the confines of the law are that we give a variance, a variance is warranted, which is why the BZA didn't give it, in my opinion, because you don't have a hardship that you can't build on the land. That is what it is. And so that is why, you know, the conversation shows that there isn't a hardship that warrants a variance.
I think BZA is very fickle in the way variances get distributed out, but if you look at the site plan, that's the second site plan that's there for the alternate that looks at keeping the existing house and then not needing as many of these variances, I don't think it addresses the safety concerns as well as the alternative. And we have engineering concerns that have to be addressed as well for turning radius and the size of the driveway. So if you keep that existing house at one foot, now the house is blocking your view of people pulling out to that street. It makes it that much more unsafe. The driveways can be built either way without the variance. Does it mean it's the best idea? No. We need to be thinking of how to do it properly upfront, not just sandwiching in what we already have. But and the other part of that is the terrain is the reason for the hardship. There's not very many lots in the fort that have 22-foot of elevation change, and they've approved a lot of variances for less. Just last week, one got approved for a parking garage with a 10-foot elevation change, down to one foot. But if you don't, if you put that driveway further down, you may not be able to meet the slope. It's a huge change in elevation.
That was my only question or comment.
Thank you, Councilmember Ryder. Councilmember Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. I must agree with a lot of the comments that my colleague, Councilwoman Ryder, mentioned. I think this is the profile of the challenge to address missing middle housing. You're nailing it. We've talked about this in the past for other properties, and I would agree that there's some inconsistency with the BZA. I'll definitely voice that opinion to them as well, directly and indirectly. And I, the reason that I struggle with this is that I appreciate your creativity in trying to solve this policy gap that we've yet to solve. I also agree with your desire to shore up the shortage in parking, to build sidewalks. You're not asking to expand the building size, the density, or the height. Unfortunately, according to the law, we have to abide by certain requirements for a hardship, and I don't think any of those have been met. I do think some of the challenges Ms. Basler raised are legitimate concerns, but I don't think, based on reviewing the record, listening to the speakers, and reviewing the BZA requirements for a hardship, I don't believe the standards for granting this has been met. I wish I could say different, I just don't think they are. There's no deprivation of the beneficial use of land, although you're providing more housing without adding more density. This is not the minimum adjustment required, and so I think as a result, abide by the law and say, I'm going to have to move to deny the appeal. So I'll listen to any of my colleagues.
Motion to deny the appeal has been made and seconded. Councilmember Thomas?
Yes, some agreement with Councilperson Ryder and Councilperson Smith. Just my interpretation of the code and the law as stipulated by Attorney Frost, I just don't see how the hardship requirement has been met. So I would agree with the motion to deny.
Thank you. Any other questions or discussion? Okay, the motion's on the floor to deny this appeal. All those in favor of denying this appeal, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion to deny carries. Next item.
10C is a resolution of the Council of the City of Knoxville approving an appeal by Roderick Ledbetter, thereby overturning the decision of the Knoxville-Knox County Planning Commission to grant a special use application filed by Robert Sullivan on behalf of Taco Bell of America LLC for a property located at 5613 Kingston Pike, 2nd District.
So we'll start with three speakers signed up, you know, three members of the parties signed up to speak in favor of this appeal, and then... Okay, so first person who's signed up to speak in favor of this appeal is Roderick Ledbetter. Mr. Ledbetter, if you could start by stating your name and address for the record, and you'll have up to five minutes.
Thank you. My name is Roderick Ledbetter. I am the proprietor of Callaway's Lamp and Shade at 5714 Kingston Pike in Bearden. As one of the oldest locally-owned businesses in Bearden, I'm here representing not only myself and my business, but also numerous small businesses throughout the Bearden Village. I believe you all have copies of the petition of the 50-plus business owners that have signed in agreement with our decision. Approximately 2/3 of the people we spoke to had not even heard about the special use approval, and nearly all of them could be best described as furious. Please also note that several corporate-owned businesses voiced their disapproval for the fast-food drive-through at this particular location, but were unable to go on record for fear of potentially losing their jobs, understandably so. While we couldn't speak to every business owner, what I can tell you is that out of all the businesses we spoke to, only two were apathetic to the fast-food drive-through at this location, and none were in support. So why is Bearden business community against having a drive-through at this location? We have two primary points. First, I'll speak in short regarding the traffic congestion, and then Mr. Britt will go into further detail about traffic in a few minutes. Additional congestion will create accessibility issues for local business as well as route avoidance. This will directly impact business revenue. When people are unable to easily access a business, they simply stop trying and possibly avoid that place altogether. Less shoppers means less money. In fact, as recently as June 25th, CNN Business published an article on this very topic. I will read the highlighted quote. "Magnets of traffic and congestion: Drive-throughs discourage walking, public transit use, and visiting neighboring businesses." This obviously is a huge concern to small businesses like mine. Should revenues drop, businesses will have to reduce the number of people they employ, potentially reduce operating hours, or close altogether. And notably, tax revenues will be negatively impacted as well. It's no wonder so many cities, as highlighted in that report, are banning drive-through, fast-food drive-throughs in certain areas. Second, the Bearden community went on record in January of 2001 with the adoption of the Bearden Village Opportunities Plan. This plan, which was prepared by the Knox County Metropolitan Planning Committee and supported by the residents and business owners of Bearden, outlined a specific personality for our business, the village. Our allowance of a drive-through at this location is in conflict with this plan. Specifically, if you will turn to page five of your copy of the Bearden Opportunities Plan that we've provided for you, we can read through these points together. On this page, the planning process is outlined. Several issues and opportunities are noted, including the desired vision of Bearden. Some of those key points are to include having a village shopping atmosphere, encouraging a sense of place and community, enhancing our unique urban character, and maintaining architectural harmony, none of which describe a fast-food drive-through. Furthermore, if you will turn to page six, you will find our community goals. I won't read all of these to you, but rather point out that these goals are a reflection of the vision and desires of our business to keep Bearden Village community unique. Lastly, I will refer to you to the page 27, Bullet III, under Implementation Tools. As no chosen entity has been selected, I'm here representing the Bearden business community to ensure that those development standards within our zone are followed. In closing, I would like to oppose a question to each of you, and that is, what is the benefit of having another fast-food drive location at this location? A building in disrepair gets torn down. I would argue that the owner maybe should have done so already. It should not be the burden of small businesses to be detrimentally impacted because he has been derelict in his responsibilities. In fact, we welcome any other type of business to be built on this location, just not a drive-through-based business at that spot. Conversely, what is the harm of having another fast-food drive-through at this location? At best, we slowly give in to an overly commercialized persona that steals our uniqueness and makes us the same as any other community. At worst, our small businesses will suffer, close their doors, and may never come back. At this point, I'm sure I sound a bit like a Lorax, so I will say thank you for your time, and I sincerely ask for your vote to overturn the city planning commission's decision. Thank you.
The next person signed up to speak is Miller Fauch. Ms. Fauch, you'll have up to five minutes to speak for this item. Please start by stating your name and address for the record.
My name is Miller Fauch. I live at 5745 Woodburn Drive. I'm a resident of Westwood, a member of the Westwood Traffic Committee, and a parent at Bearden Elementary School. My main point tonight is that this drive-through will increase traffic congestion in an already notorious area of Kingston Pike. I've provided you with a printed map to show you what I mean. It's clipped, and the impact of this business beyond just the Kingston Pike footprint. If you would please look at map number one. When Kingston Pike backs up from the intersection heading west at North Shore, the cut-through traffic in our neighborhood increases. The stretch of Kingston Pike from North Shore to Forest Park Boulevard heading west is congested every day at multiple times per day. With the addition of a drive-through establishment in this stretch headed west, the cut-through traffic will only increase exponentially. There are currently zero fast-food drive-throughs in this particular section headed west. People turn right at Westwood Drive or enter Sutherland at slow points off Kingston Pike. I've highlighted those in green on the map for you. This is because Google Maps and Waze direct traffic off Kingston Pike through our neighborhood to North Shore. By cutting through our neighborhood heading west, you can avoid seven stoplights if you cut down Sutherland. Compass, please do not print that. I've been a member of the Westwood Neighborhood Traffic Committee since January 2020. We've worked diligently with the Office of Neighborhoods, City Engineering, and Vice Mayor Roberto to complete a traffic study. The study for my road showed an average of 856 vehicles a day. West Road Road has an average of 1,009 vehicles per day. For data point, we have 200 homes in Westwood, and this data was collected in 2021, so kind of after COVID. We'll be getting 10 new speed humps in the next few weeks. The lines were painted over the weekend. This is in addition to the three already existing humps and the one-way streets our neighborhood received after a traffic study decades ago. As you can tell, this three-year process has been lengthy, but I do appreciate the city's traffic calming program and the continued funding from this very council. Just this weekend, someone flipped their car on my road at 1 a.m. when they hit a speed bump, and earlier this year, someone died trying to turn left onto North Shore from my street. We are a neighborhood sandwiched between two TDOT highways. However, we're part of the Bearden District, and we love being attached to the greenway. My husband rides his bike every day on his lunch break, and there are many bikers who use this to commute. I walk my children to Bearden Elementary, and I live in the parental responsibility zone, but less than five families consistently walk to school from Westwood or Forest Heights because of traffic safety concerns and lack of sidewalks. How many Knoxville schools can say they're located directly on a greenway, but they don't have students using them? We need to increase safe and accessible paths to our schools for pedestrians. This will also decrease cars on the road. There's actually two schools that abut this property. I personally had to explain that to the developers. KAC is an alternative school serving students with emotional disabilities in Knox County. Several teachers from KAC commented publicly against this development due to safety concerns for their population's tendency for elopement. The developer's data has tried to justify they will not interfere with school arrival and dismissal times, but both schools are community hubs and house programming long past dismissal time. My own daughter attends the YMCA aftercare house at BES, WBBL uses a KAC gym, and one Knox uses the outdoor fields year-round. I'm not just talking about two 30-minute windows of time during the day. Please look at map number two. In addition to a traffic concern, this is a school safety issue. We already have Zips Car Wash customers using the school road to access the traffic light to make a left heading east on Kingston Pike. This will most certainly happen once restaurant customers realize turning left on Kingston Pike is almost impossible. This is also a neighborhood safety issue. The proposed restaurant operates as a drive-through-only facility from 11 p.m. until closing at 2 or 3 a.m., with employees not allowed to go outside after dark to keep them safe. That does not make me feel safe about welcoming them to our neighborhood. I have personally met with the opposition three times since the start of this, including organizing and hosting a community meeting with stakeholders that was well-attended with open questions from neighbors, developers, the corporation, and property owner. My neighborhood just paid the bill for this meeting. In conclusion, I respectfully ask you to consider why planning out of variance in place of new drive-throughs due to backups of other fast-food establishments. However, none of those cause traffic to divert into a local neighborhood. The backups will cause a loss of revenue and harm the ingress and egress of these two schools. I would ask that you support the area in not approving this and not approve any additional drive-throughs on this stretch until the TDOT project at North Shore and Kingston Pike is complete. One last item, the petitions you received just this evening contain over 200 signatures from Bearden residents. Overwhelmingly, a majority of those live in Westwood and Forest Heights, which will be directly impacted by this drive-through. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next person is Keith Britt. Mr. Britt, if you could start by stating your name and address for the record, and you'll have up to five minutes.
Excuse me, Keith Britt, 506 Nolton Drive.
Keith Britt, 506 Nolton Drive. Current traffic is heaviest in the westbound lane, which this development is proposed to abut, with traffic frequently backing up to the development site location. Anecdotally, I drive past this spot five times a week, taking my kids to and from preschool. It's a nightmare, particularly in the afternoons. They're also big fans of the artisan cakery and Pelican snowballs. I can tell you, if traffic gets any worse on this section of road, we aren't going to be able to go there anymore because it's just not even safe to drive-through there. The proposed development is a drive-through, vehicle-centric, commercial enterprise with the explicit economic motivation to move as many cars in and out of the location as rapidly as possible. That's not me just saying that. MPD Group Market Research found this branded facility had a drive-through customer rate of 40% and a carryout customer rate of 26%. That was in 2012. Since then, in 2019, their percentage of customers that went through the drive-through was 90%. It's fallen slightly since then; we currently estimate it this year to be about 75%. Furthermore, Intouch Insights ranked this branded restaurant as having the third fastest drive-through in the nation, and the corporate brand owner in 2021 put out a press statement explicitly saying that their focus and emphasis over the coming decade would be drive-through customers. If this development moves forward, using the applicant's own calculations, there will be, on average, a vehicle entering or exiting the location every three minutes, and that's going to be at a much more rapid pace during peak business hours, which happen to overlap with school drop-off, school pickup, and prime traffic hours from people leaving and coming to work. Additionally, a goal of this development is to pull traffic off of Interstate 40 onto Kingston Pike, and that's going to be passing through the North Shore intersection, which is the primary driver for the traffic in this area, so it's going to exacerbate the problem and backtrack traffic up more. We heard arguments in the initial application saying there would be minimal traffic increases, but those estimates were based off of 2019 traffic data. I can tell you, in the last four years, traffic has drastically increased since then. We also heard arguments that there are looming TDOT changes to the North Shore intersection, but optimistically, those will be ready in 2028; I would probably say more practically 2030. To provide you with some statistical analysis of the traffic danger that this introduces, if this development raises the risk of a vehicle colliding with a pedestrian, a bicyclist, or another vehicle by a measly 1% a day, over the span of 69 days, the chances of somebody being seriously injured or killed grows to over 50%. Within this first year of operations, it's a near certainty at 97.5%. There do seem to be two ways that the developer could minimize the traffic danger introduced here. It could emphasize sit-down dining instead of drive-through. That's not part of their core business concept right now, but that would be one solution. Or they could just move it to the other side of the road. This really is based very site-specific. There are other restaurants that do have frequent guest customers coming in and out on the opposite side of the road, and it's not as much of an issue because traffic isn't as heavy on that side of the road, and it's not as congested on that side of the road because it's not being stopped by the North Shore intersection. I would just like to emphasize that we do not oppose this brand of restaurant. I personally have fond memories of racing my uncle to see who could eat 20 tacos the fastest. We are just very community-focused. We see the schoolchildren, we see the pedestrians, we see the bicyclists, we see the Bearden Development Plan, we see the Kingston Pike Complete Connected Projects that you unveiled at the West Knoxville Community Meeting. And we're just hoping to keep this place safe for the people that live there and viable for the small businesses that are already there. So we very much like your support in opposing this application, and Godspeed.
Thank you. And now for people signed up to speak in opposition to this. Taylor Forster, you may have up to five minutes. Please begin by stating your name and address for the record.
Taylor Forster, 1111 North North Shore Drive, Knoxville, Tennessee, 37919. In preparing for this meeting and reviewing the record, I noticed that the constant theme was, we don't want a Taco Bell, from the opposition. Taco Bell's not right for the area; Taco Bell's not right for this property. That is not what we are here to determine. This is a special use review for a drive-through facility, not necessarily a fast-food restaurant, not a Taco Bell, or any other type of specific fast-food restaurant. The special use standards that you apply would be the same application to a bank with a drive-through, a pharmacy with a drive-through, or even a dry cleaners. There is no distinction based on this being a fast-food restaurant, especially a Taco In order for a drive-through to be approved, it must, under the Knoxville ordinances, it must satisfy a special use approval standards. Those are six standards; those are expressly stated within the ordinance. The first is that the use is consistent with adopted plans and policies, including the general plan and the one-year plan. In your packet, you would have seen the planning staff report on this, and the planning staff report addresses each one of these use standards. Here, the sector plan is the mixed-use specialty district known as the Bearden Village. This is special mixed-use district references the Bearden's Opportunity Plan. The Bearden Village Plan divides the Bearden area into four areas: Homburg Drive Area, Kingston Pike Commercial Corridor, Sutherland Avenue Corridor, and Forest Park Boulevard and Chambliss Drive Area. The property here is located within the Kingston Pike Commercial Corridor. So a lot of the opposition, the comments, have been that the Bearden Plan isn't being complied with because it was to create pedestrian-type developments. As noted in the staff report, that was geared at the Homburg Drive Area under the Bearden Village Opportunities Plan. So the main implementation of the Bearden Village Plan that was created in 2001, its key implementation factor was establishing new zoning to incorporate this Bearden Village Plan. That has happened, the CG1 Zone, which brings us to the next standard that must be satisfied: the use is in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the zoning ordinance. Drive-through facilities are permitted under a special use approval in the CG1 Zone. The CG1 Zone provides for a mix of retail, personal service, office, and residential uses. Next standard is the use is compatible with character of neighborhood where it is proposed and with the size and location of the buildings in the vicinity. Drive-through facility here is a, the proposed drive-through facility is of similar size to other structures on the block. There are two other restaurants with drive-throughs within the immediate vicinity. You have Sonic, which is located across Kingston but less than 600 feet away, and then Buddy's Barbecue, which is located a little over 700 feet away. Next standard is that the use will not significantly injure the value of adjacent property or by noise, lights, fumes, odors, vibration, traffic congestion, and other impacts that detract from the immediate environment. Here is, the opposition has stated concerns over traffic. They have produced no studies or any expert findings that support this; it's just unsubstantiated fears and concerns. In fact, at the planning commission meeting, city Knoxville Engineering Department went through great detail on noting that the traffic has actually decreased in this area of the Kingston Pike Commercial Corridor, and that based on the approximate 1,000 trips per day to Taco Bell, that it'll apply a 40% pass-or-buy rate, which reduces that essentially to 600 trips, but 600 trips is 300 in, 300 out. And the ultimate effect, net effect, on the traffic in this area was minimal; it's nominal, in their opinion, and I'd ask you to call on them to maybe offer further detail. And furthermore, this is a state highway; this is a state right-of-way. Next standard is the use is not of a nature or so located to draw substantial additional traffic through the residential streets. This has one access point, ingress egress limited to Kingston Pike; there is no cut-through back access that will drive traffic through residential neighborhoods. The nature of the development in the surrounding area is not such as to pose potential hazard or pros used. In the area, there are no surrounding developments that have any kind of impact on this proposed development. Again, we ask that you follow this planning staff and planning commission approval of this and deny the appeal. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person signed up on this is James Niedlinger. If you could state your name and address for the record, and you'll have up to five minutes.
My name is James Niedlinger, 1117 Promonters Center West, Atlanta, Georgia. I would like to commend you on saying my name; that's the first time, I think, in one of these meetings, somebody said it correctly, so thank you. I won't need the full five minutes. I'm here more to speak. I'm with the engineering company that is doing this project, GPD Group, and there has been a lot of misinformation from the opposition, one of which, we gave you a packet which shows the peak times of business, which would be the peak traffic times for Taco Bell, and you can see on there, it very clearly shows two lines, in the morning, two lines in the afternoon. Those are the drop-off and pickup of the two schools. They said that our peak times would be at those corresponding times, and they're not. Our peak time would be at noon, where there's neither pickup nor drop-off of either school. Just to clarify, the actual trip numbers would be 1,070 on an average day, which is split between trips in and trips out, so it's actually 535 cars going to the site. The interesting thing about fast food is that the residents are very concerned that we're going to create traffic on the road. Fast food with drive-through does not create traffic; it captures traffic. The reason why Taco Bell wants to be on this site is because Kingston Pike is a very busy road already. Not very many people are going to leave their home and go to Taco Bell to buy Taco Bell. They're going to stop on their way home; they're going to go out at lunch and get it, which, again, is not a peak time for pickup or drop-off. So basically, what I'm trying to say is that if the majority of the argument is about us creating traffic, I think the word the city engineer used at the planning was a drop in the bucket as to what we'd be creating. This is a big piece of property, and it could be redeveloped as other uses that could actually generate as much or more traffic, and it wouldn't be capture-pass-or-buy traffic; it would be destination trips. So with that being said, some of the other concerns are, I heard them say, kids don't walk to school on this street. I have two kids; I live near a school; they walked when they were in elementary school. I would not let my children walk down Kingston Pike in its current condition. The site that we're talking about has no sidewalk in front of it; it has head-in parking coming off of Kingston Pike where people would be backing into Kingston Pike to get out. There's other businesses that are along that road that also have this situation. The parents that are picking up at this school in the afternoon, we actually spent a week out there, I think, three days, four days, watching to see what the traffic patterns were. Cars would pull into the site illegally, and they would park parallel to the road, and then as the school let out, they started to move, they would jump out around a power pole and then back into the driveway that goes up to the school. What we're proposing is to have a sidewalk out there for the children to walk on. We're having a single driveway. There's a throat to the driveway, so cars would be able to see the kids walking across. So we're actually hoping that this development would increase the safety of children walking to school and not decrease it. And if anybody has any questions specifically about the traffic or about the site layout, I'd be happy to address them. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And now the people in favor of this item have the opportunity for a two-minute rebuttal, and Becky Ledbetter signed up to speak to that rebuttal. Ms. Ledbetter, if you could state your name and address for the record, and you'll have up to two minutes.
My name is Rebecca Ledbetter. I'm at 5517 Lonest Drive in Bearden. First, I'd like to address the drive-throughs that were brought up, the Sonics and Buddies, which are on the eastbound side of Kingston Pike, which is in the opposite direction of where our current traffic problem exists. It should be noted that there are multiple entrances and exits for both of those facilities as opposed to the one singular entrance and exit proposed for this location for a fast-food drive-through. Additionally, there was actually no traffic study performed to substantiate any of the traffic flow discussion that has occurred from our opposition. What we can tell you is there's not been anything to substantiate how long a car will take to slow down to pull into a drive-through or pull out of a drive-through, specifically in the height of the traffic times in this location, which is just about noon time at any given day. I would also like to say that there's a large distinction between a traffic pattern of a drive-through of a dry cleaner, for example. A dry cleaner does not expect to have 11 simultaneous cars, as was discussed in our last meeting, in their drive-through, pulling in and out of the drive every two minutes or every three minutes, depending on the math that you use. Lastly, I would like to state again for the record, we have no issue with Taco Bell. In fact, if Taco Bell were to agree to do a sit-down-only facility in this location without the option to have a drive-through in the future, now or ever, we would happily welcome them into our community. Thank you very much.
Council members, the floor is yours. Vice Mayor Roberto.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to start off by thanking Mr. Forster for our conversations and the materials he sent me and his presentation today. I also want to make note of all the neighbors who are here, and I appreciate you all taking time out of your schedules to come to this meeting tonight, so just appreciate your presence. Also want to send a special thank you to Ms. Fauch for organizing the neighborhood meeting that brought the applicant together with the neighbors, and just really appreciate you. I know that was a hard, there was a lot of work to put together and to coordinate, and I just wanted to let you know how much I appreciate you doing that. I've reviewed the record here; I've looked at the information that's been sent to me, and I've listened to the speakers this evening. From my review of all the material and the standards under 16.2, I disagree with the decision about a drive-through at this location. I think a restaurant at this location is allowed by zoning, but the addition of a drive-through is not appropriate at this particular location. I don't think the proposal is compatible with the character of the neighborhood, particularly with the elementary school and the adaptive learning center in the immediate vicinity, particularly when you take into account young children and traffic. Mr. Forster, in his presentation this evening, did mention that there's a nearby Sonic and a Buddy's Barbecue; both of those have drive-throughs, and I know the neighbors discussed this as well. Both of those drive-throughs are on the opposite side of Kingston Pike, which I find to be a very important difference. I don't think the proposed drive-through is compatible with the area just from many trips going up and down that side of, that part of Kingston Pike. I don't think there are any, and if there are, there are very few, drive-throughs, if any, on the side of the street that's being proposed here. I don't feel like this is compatible. The two drive-throughs that are, that have been talked about, the Sonic and the Buddy's, those, like I said, are on the opposite side of the street, and they back up to a railroad track. I think this is incompatible with the character of neighborhood where it's proposed because it is the first probably restaurant-drive-through in the area north of Kingston Pike, and it will impact and detract from the immediate environment. Therefore, I make a motion to approve the appeal.
Second.
Motion made to approve the appeal has been made and seconded. Any further questions? Yes, Councilmember McKenzie?
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to make a statement. The gentleman that spoke indicated that this was an indictment against Taco Bell specifically as the eatery that would be going into this location, and I disagree with that. We welcome Taco Bell in this city. Taco Bell's everywhere that I've gone. I don't personally really eat at Taco Bell, but the lines are always long, and I think that I'm going to try it pretty soon, but just wanted to be really clear that Taco Bell, this is not an indictment against Taco Bell as an eatery or business. Thank you.
Councilmember Testerman?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say, I mean, this is a tough position. You know, I've, I call this the Bearden Bubble. I've lived there for more than 20 years. My mom was one of, grew up there 80 years ago, and her family was one of the original families in Westwood. I've owned two businesses in this area. I drive in this area multiple times a day. I'm I'm keenly aware of the traffic, and it's a special place. At the same time, I do struggle with this, because there was a great deal of thought and conversation that went into this by planning commission, planning staff, and, you know, I've seen the Opportunity Plan, I've read through the Opportunity Plan, and there's so many great things about it, but you also have a major arterial street that is a state route. And I just, I think you have to take that into account. There are, in fact, 28 drive-throughs in this stretch on both sides of the street. And, you know, in my opinion, one was actually approved on Bearden Hill on this exact same agenda that this Taco Bell proposal was on. We just approved one right down, you know, three blocks away, Andy's Frozen Custard, right past Krispy Kreme. I know that's just on the other side of North Shore, but at the same time, it's setting two different precedents. In my opinion, I would appeal to engineering to actually look at the lights. There are four lights right there between Westwood and North Shore to see how well they're synced, what the timing of those lights are, when the traffic is backed up during those times. There's also a proposed $20 million improvement at the intersection of North Shore and Kingston Pike that TDOT has the plans on, and hopefully with the infrastructure dollars that they have, that that project will be moved up. So, so much more goes into making a community walkable, the on-street parking, bike lanes, bus lanes, but again, being a state route, the feasibility and the fiscal feasibility of that is, is hard to, hard to justify. You know, you've got businesses, Anthropology, Lululemon, Nothing But Cakes, Madewell, they're all national brands, they're all destination places that bring a great deal of traffic to that area. I think they're great, but talking about a destination place in this Taco Bell site is a, is an enormous lot. So therefore, it could bring something much greater than a Taco Bell that, as we heard, could generate a substantial more amount of traffic. I do think the traffic impact study that was done is relevant, it hasn't been that long ago, that was used in formulating these recommendations, and, you know, I question, you know, prior to Recode, this property would have been, we wouldn't be here, we wouldn't have this discussion, because it would be the right of the owner to do whatever. And so, again, I just, this is a precious place to me. I live it every day, work, live, play, and have for 54 years. But I really, when you look at the just, what the planning staff recommended, and I would love to hear from Amy Brooks, as well as what Planning Commission, who you have a number of people who are experts in land use on that governing body, who have taken this, who also live, work, and play in this area, who have taken a great deal of consideration to that. So I would just, I just have a hard time being able to justify that they met all six criteria that were taken into consideration, and I would like to know from that, then on what basis is it overturned if they've met everything that we have put forth? So I will leave it at that for now.
Thank you. Councilmember Smith?
Thank you. I think we've all, I agree with a lot of my colleagues' comments, definitely the focus of the conversation is on traffic, and I agree with Mr. Forrester at this point. The opposition's quantitative argument is based on lived experience, you know, it may not be an official report stamped by any certified body, but it's lived experience. And on that note, I guess my question is for Mr. Reynolds or Ms. Brooks. I know a traffic impact analysis of some sort was done in the past, but why, why don't we do, why don't we require a traffic impact study for special use?
If you could state your name and position, please.
Yes, I'm Mike Reynolds, Knoxville, Knoxville County Planning, Principal Planner. We do require traffic impact studies for special uses if, if they generate over 750 trips a day. I would say that Taco Bell probably does trip that. The engineering staff on our staff and the city staff is, in this case, as well as TDOT, since it's a TDOT facility, get together and discuss what type of traffic study might be required. In this case, they felt that a full traffic study was not warranted. They asked for a traffic impact letter that just mainly looked at site distance along Kingston Pike at their entrance point.
Okay. All right, thank you. I think the burden of proof in this circumstance, I don't know how it sits legally, but I think generally speaking, is on the applicant to prove that they are not going to add too much traffic to the system. It's just my kind of personal take on this, and that without that study, I don't feel confident that this is not going to add significant traffic, because we don't have a reliable third-party study that, that assesses that. And as a current Westwood drive-through customer, guilty as charged of cutting through, I've backed up here plenty of times, and I can see any drive-through creating a significant backlog. And without a third-party analysis, I don't think I can support the drive-through. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Thomas?
Yes, maybe a couple of points. There's a Taco Bell close to my house on Broadway, and this, as one of my colleagues said, this is not in any way an indictment of Taco Bell. It's in the Broadway Shopping Center. I've occasionally been known to go through there and get a seven-layer burrito, not frequently, but sometimes. So I'm familiar with Taco Bell. The difference there, though, is that Taco Bell is located within a shopping center. It is a drive-through, but the ingress and outgress is not directly onto Broadway. So you have that more of a calming, safer effect. So my problem with this Taco Bell is that the entrance and exit are straight out onto a main corridor. So if the circumstances were more like the site on Broadway and the Broadway Shopping Center, I probably wouldn't have nearly the, the problem with this. The second point, too, is just in, in terms of general need for a community, I agree with Councilmember Smith about kind of the onus on the applicant. I don't think we should readily agree to variances or zoning changes or special uses without a clearly justifiable need for it. And the fact that there are many fast-food places in this area, to me, cuts in the other direction. It's like, what is the need for the community for, for even more? So I'm trying to look at the balance of what the community needs versus what is already available there, and I don't really see a need for any more fast-food places in, in the area. And I guess my final point is there's been situations on this council where we have denied applications because it wasn't quite the right fit for that neighborhood and consistent with, with the code and, and the criteria. And by having some patience in doing that, quite often, it's not that long we have to wait before another developer comes in or another situation comes in, and they apply, and it's a win-win situation. It's a good, good business, the neighborhood is something they need, and so I am much more in favor of, of agreeing that the applicant's request should be denied in this situation, not necessarily anything against even fast food or, or Taco Bell, but I think by, by having patience, we may be, come out better in the long run, both for the community and for, for businesses. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Mr. Frost, you had a point of clarification?
Thank you, Mayor. I heard Councilmember Smith's remarks. I don't really think you need to be deciding that the burden is on the applicant. Mr. Forrester's client prevailed at the Planning Commission, as is the right of the people who were unhappy with it. They appealed to City Council. It could have likewise been, if Mr. Forrester's client lost, they could have appealed to Council. Mr. Forrester did correctly state the standards in this situation in his presentation. You are to look at this particular location. I think you need to consider what's in the record before you, consider what the people say or said at the podium there, and considering all that, make your decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Ryder?
Yeah, I'm evaluating the comments I was going to make based on Mr. Frost's comments. So I don't know, I may not make it. Okay, so I do have Taco Bell near my house, and as Councilman Thomas, yes, said, it is in a shopping center. There's also another Taco Bell, I don't mean to single out Taco Bells, there's Sonics, there's Taco Bells, there's the Starbucks, a lot of those are in shopping centers. I'm just thinking of other examples, but let me, let me get my thoughts on track here. When we were doing Recode, there was a lot of conversation about special use and applying special use to different things. And so the comments, I just want to touch on that, because it was a comment about use by right versus having to go through a special use process currently versus the previous code before it was modified. That was deliberated in-depth, and part of the discussion was that in all of history, I think, I believe Mr. Johnson might remember this, somebody was asked to dig up and see how many special uses had actually been turned down. Well, it might not have been you, but it may have been MPC staff. Okay, it's been a while, but it was like one or two in all of time. It's not typically a place where things get yayed or nayed. It's sometimes a place where context is analyzed and modifications are made to make the context around what the request is be more cohesive with each other or work better in harmony together. And so I also want to state that I would support looking at a special use review for these types of uses, because I can think of examples in my own district, just as a reference point, where there are drive-throughs in one place that work harmoniously, but in other places where they're tucked into neighborhoods, it doesn't work that well. I'm also incredibly familiar with this area. It's, I, this is where I go lunch from work, working off Sutherland, and it's hard to get into any of those drive-throughs. The traffic is, is very high. Go into the Sonic or the Buddy's Barbecue, the Chick-fil-A, the Starbucks, they're all difficult, and all of those drive-throughs are on the opposite side. There's an immense amount of congestion coming off there from Sutherland and Westwood and turning right. And the only other thing I want to say about the special use process is that if you read through the content of the standards, it says "may" not "shall," and I think that's really important, because the whole purpose in applying this to the zoning code is to look at the context at which the request is. And I think if we were looking at a review, a special use, I don't think we would be looking, I don't think we would have an appeal to Council for a special use for their, a fast-food restaurant in, say, the old Kmart Shopping Center up Kingston Pike. But this is a different context in terms of the number of driveways surrounding it, the road they're coming off of Sutherland, turning around between all the other banks. So in light of those pieces of context and analyzing, I'm going to support Councilman Roberto's motion.
Thank you. Councilmember Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. Just in light of Mr. Frost's comments and in respect for Mr. Forrester, I think my comments were specifically related to requirement number four, that the use will not significantly injure the value of adjacent property by traffic or congestion, and I just don't think that that, that evidence is there. So just to clarify that. Thank you.
Councilmember Testerman?
I just want to say, I mean, you know, personally, while I might like something else there, you know, it's not really within our purview to be able to pick and choose necessarily what goes onto a property. You know, I've, I've heard and through the emails that we've received, you know, proposed mixed-use with three to five stories and residential, and I got to think if that were on the table, or it wouldn't be on the table, because it could just, it could happen without this, that there would be similar sentiments, because, again, of multitude of businesses, residential, et cetera, generating more traffic. Two things, Mr. Claybo, in my earlier comments on the traffic lights between Westwood and North Shore, I don't know if engineering has in fact looked at that stretch as far as, you know, the timing of the lights, and could those be adjusted to somehow mitigate some of the traffic concerns when it's congested? I was, drove through there at four o'clock this afternoon, and it was perfectly fine, but I'm just curious if that, if that was something that could be explored.
Tom Claybo, Engineering Director, though, we have looked at those lots before, but we would be glad to take a look at them again to make sure that there's, there's nothing that's out of sync with those, but it's, it's, it's really the volume of traffic on both streets in that area that caused the issue, so, but we'd be happy to take a look at the traffic signals.
Thank you. And Ms. Brooks, can you speak to sort of how you all came to this conclusion? I mean, some of the facts that I have that, and maybe this is Mr. Claybo, too, talking about traffic pattern and passers-by, and you've got 40%, but the data reveals really 55% passer-by, which would be less in-and-out traffic, it would be people already passing by. I mean, I do argue a little bit, I don't feel like people are going to be traveling from great distances to come to Taco Bell, and I'm just curious, from your perspective...
Amy Brooks, Knoxville, Knoxville County Planning, I would defer to Mr. Claybo on that.
Okay. The, in the transportation impact letter, we looked at the, the size of the structure, and it was proposed it would generate 1,065 trips. In, in looking at that, that type of business, we expected that 40% of those would be vehicles that are already on the road that are just passing by. So you're really looking at 60% of the vehicles that would be generated coming to that destination. So that's around 640 trips, but that's in and out, so it's around 300 new vehicles.
But as I see it, Taco Bell would represent a higher passer-by rate, which would translate to less, I mean, they're already there, in other words. Correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Okay, thank you. That's all I've got.
Thank you. Seeing no further lights on? Ms. Testerman, your lights off? Okay. I don't see any other questions or comments. Does everyone understand the motion on the floor? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carries.
11A is a resolution supporting the pursuit of partnerships to address mental health, substance abuse, and behavioral health needs in Knoxville, including a local, long-term psychiatric hospitalization unit with the intention of serving low-income and uninsured individuals, and the provision of matching funds to support the development of a business and service delivery plan for alternative response services.
Move to approve.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Councilmembers, there are three people signed up to speak in favor of this, and more than three signed up to speak in opposition. We'll start with those in favor. First is Ms. Vivian Shipe. Ms. Shipe, if you could come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and you'll have up to five minutes. and you'll have up to five minutes.
Vivian Shipe, 3615 Martin Luther King Avenue, Knoxville, Tennessee, 37919. When I called in to sign up for this, I couldn't exactly describe how I was going to speak about this when they asked me if I were again. So today I am coming forward because I wanted to come and talk to you about having each other six. I want to speak on loyalty and cooperation, and I'm here to speak about collaboration. Let's say that you have two boxes in front of you. One of the boxes is beautiful, much like you're always used to seeing. The other box is uniquely different. Its corners are not rounded off, the paper is not anything like you've ever seen. Unknown to you, the better gift is inside the box that is different, but you have continually chosen to stay in the lane of the boxes that you're used to. And as the contents have been unfurled to you, you look with regret back at what you have seen and at what you have passed by. This is the scenario that I have been witnessing over and over with this council. A perfect example is the resolution brought to you by Ms. Parker. Now, instead of backing it and tweaking a perfectly solid resolution, you come up with another. This must stop. Parker has an excellent, and she's been an excellent, and I hope she will be for the future, a council member. She has repeatedly offered you wonderful suggestions for this city only to be shot down. As a result, time is wasted that could be better used by bringing to life projects that will help those that you were put in office to serve. I am here tonight to support the resolution Amelia Parker has already presented. It is a good one, and if we would please stop creating alliances and start working collectively, you would serve much better the people that you were elected to serve. We do not need another resolution. We need resolve. It is time to resolve to start working together for the greater good of those that you were sent here to serve. You see, collaboration works.
The next person signed up to speak to this item is Ben Harrington. Mr. Harrington, if you could state your name and address for the record, and you'll have up to five minutes. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. My name is Ben Harrington. I am the CEO of the Mental Health Association of East Tennessee, and the address is 9050 Executive Park Drive, 37923. You know, that's a challenge following Ms. Vivian. She's awesome. I'm here to support Resolution 11A, and I will tell you why. Any opportunity to advance what we do in our community to support the needs of persons with mental illness is a good one. And COVID-19 doubled the number of people in our community who need mental health care, and it hasn't gone backwards, it hasn't abated even though COVID did abate. And so we are challenged even further today with more and more people seeking mental health care and also the challenges of a behavioral health workforce shortage, which, when we deal with all of that, sometimes we're going to end up with people who have a crisis, have a more emergent need, and may also become in contact with our law enforcement community. As such, we need to advance our mental health system in a positive way, and that is why I am supportive of Resolution 11A, because it builds on existing partnerships that we have in our community. It builds on the existing successes that we have in our community, and I can elaborate on a number of them. My career is 29 years, and one of the things that makes me most proud is I stood with the community when we needed to reform police training back in 1998. In those days, it clearly told every officer that was going through the recruit school that everyone with a mental illness was psychopathic or sociopathic. We got the opportunity to meet with the mayor, Mayor Ash, and we changed that. And that built a longstanding partnership that has led to many advances in mental health in our community and interventions with the criminal justice system that's built the CSU, that's helped build the BHUC. And Ms. Vivian was there with me when it opened. We were proud to support that, and we were proud to support the advancement of the co-response model that is operated by KPD and McNAB Center, which is stellar, by the way. And so building on all of that is a tremendous opportunity for the community and a tremendous opportunity for the city and its mental health providers, public and private, and it's an opportunity to build greater partnerships. I do want to point out something in the resolution that I think is very important. It's right in the middle, and it says, "Whereas City Council supports a multi-juridicional effort to explore how an alternate response program could serve the greater Knoxville community with rapid onsite crisis response that is integrated with 911 dispatch." That is extremely important to me because it leaves this door open to explore exactly how the community can benefit, the ways in which we need to improve mental health services for our community, and that's all members of our community. And it allows us to dig deep to the data which we know is already helping drive and shape this conversation. That co-response unit that KPD and McNAB operates is stellar. There are multiple programs across the country that fit the model of a co-response or a alternate response model. The Denver program is outstanding. It's called STARS. There is a Nashville program that is similar to what...
Hey, please do not interrupt the speakers, or you may be asked to leave.
There is a Nashville program that is similar and designed to what is articulated in this resolution, and there are probably other models that are worthy of exploration. And that is what I would hope to see would happen if this resolution were passed and we had the opportunity to work together as a community and explore all of our options and all of our needs to advance mental health services in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person signed up to speak in favor of 11A is Parker Bartholomew. Mr. Bartholomew, if you could come to the podium, state your name and address for the record.
Parker Bartholomew, Chairman of Angelic Ministries, 1218 North Central Street, Knoxville, Tennessee, 37917. Angelic Ministries serves over 20,000 individuals a year during their time of crisis. In many cases, mental health challenges are the root of the problem. This requires agencies all working together. Some of those that work include the McNAB Center, VMC, CARM, Cherokee Health, CAC, CareCuts, KCDC, KLF, Mobile Crisis, the City of Knoxville, Knox County, not to mention the hundreds of churches and thousands of volunteers. To say this is a complex problem is an understatement. Dealing with mental health challenges require not only immediate needs, but also lifelong and generational challenges, challenges that the individual can control and challenges that are a product of their surroundings, challenges that can be dealt with by the individual, and challenges that can be dealt with only by society. Some require short-term solutions, and others require treatment for the rest of their lives. If Angelic tried to solve the mental health, substance abuse, affordable housing, homelessness, and families in crisis by ourselves, we would be in utter failure. All of these things are a product of the mental health crisis that we have in our society right now. It requires many organizations working together in love and respect. It requires a public and private partnership, and it requires flexibility. In all of these challenges, what works for one does not work for all. As I read through the resolution, it tries to show just how complicated this problem is. It includes multiple departments from the State of Tennessee, Knox County, the City of Knoxville, and then it includes private and public organizations. Surely we can all agree that if the city tries to do this alone, it'll be a complete failure, just like if Angelic was to do it alone. To solve this problem will require a coalition of organizations. Of all three resolutions that are presented this evening, this is the one that is best at creating those coalitions to solve this problem while not placing blame. We are responsible, we all are responsible for this mental health crisis that we're dealing with. Pointing fingers will not only solve the problem, but it will make it harder to create the partnerships that are needed to solve it. I'm encouraged to see that the state, county, city, and local nonprofits are working together. Can we do better? Of course we can. We are working in the right direction, and we must do more. We are using evidence-based research to adapt and improve. The city passing this resolution tonight shows its commitment to continue to deal with the mental health crisis and encourage involvement from the organizations that must work together. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. The first person signed up to speak in opposition to 11A is Moira Connolly. Ms. Connolly? Is Ms. Connolly here? There you are. If you have, if you could state your name and address for the record, and you'll have up to five minutes.
Thank you. My name is Moira Connolly. I live at 5726 Briscoe Circle in Knoxville. As I start, I would like to call everyone's attention to an opinion piece that appeared in the Knox News Sentinel this afternoon. It has a lot of really good background on this situation. It's by Imani Infame, and it's called "The Call for Alternative Response in Knoxville: City Co-ops Community Plans." That's got a lot of good information in it, too. We are in an unfortunate situation this evening of having dueling resolutions, and the reason we're here is because we have someone who has not sort of acted in an equitable and dignified and caring way to either the community, or I would say to his colleagues. So when Councilmember Roberto came up with this resolution, he slammed with great surprise the group of people who have been working on the one part of his resolution for three years in the City of Knoxville. And addition, he had a colleague who had made a resolution, and then in consideration of the feedback that she had received from her colleagues on council, had decided to postpone that in an effort to receive feedback and then bring back an updated resolution for people to be able to view. So in the time that, that Councilmember Parker had moved her resolution, our group, Knoxville Heart, spent hours and hours reaching out to different council members. We got feedback. We had, we had probably three to five different possible resolutions that we were going to bring back, that we were shopping around to each other, to other community members, to different council members. We never got an opportunity to do that before Councilmember Roberto just came out with his resolution. So, so that's part, this is partly a means and an end situation, so I have a lot of problems with the means. This resolution is also problematic in its ends, okay? So, so what happens here is that we end up with a kitchen sink resolution, is what I would call it. So I understand what the previous gentleman was saying about we have a lot of complicated things that need to be working together, groups and people that all need to work together, but not in a mishmash, all right? So what we have in the, in the resolution that Councilmember Roberto put forward is several different items that are not fleshed out to be full enough to, for any one of them to actually be implementable, okay? So we have this idea of a psychiatric hospitalization unit. Years, right? We're talking years and years. How many studies does it take to get that done, right? Then even when Councilmember Roberto does, you know, make, give a nod to what community members have been working on for three years, the alternative response, we just see the dollar amount, which is wonderful, but Councilmember Parker has had a task force, and her new resolution tonight calls for public hearing. Where's the policy piece? We get, we get, someone's going to write us a check, but what are you going to do with the check? Who's going to talk about the check? Where are you going to get the community members to make the, the decision about how the check is going to be used in terms of a programmatic manner? So we have here before us, I would argue, a very problematic resolution in both how it was created and delivered to the public and in what it contains. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person is Rick Roach. Rick Roach, if you could come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and you'll have up to five minutes.
Rick Roach, Knoxville. I'd like to ask one question. Although I was raised to never question people's motives, just look at what they do. This resolution speaks for itself. That's why I'm in opposition to it. Volunteering in the healthcare area on the consumer side for a few years, sitting before mental health officials, social workers, everyone else, it always boiled down to one thing, and that was commitment and prioritization. State of Tennessee, 2010, the ACA was passed. State of Tennessee still has not done Medicaid expansion. So you want to work with the state? That's who you're going to be working with. That's who you say you're going to be working with. First budget that our county mayor put up could cut plenty of areas, but the first place he cut on his proposed budget was indigent care. So what are we going to do here, people? Now, I'm going to say this, I've kind of been on the outside looking in, but I've been on the inside looking out, too, on this whole process, especially since May 30th. And there's some backstabbing, low-down closet dealing stuff that no public official should be engaged in. You have misinformed and gotten backing for your resolution. You've got people sitting here, now they're listening, okay, because they found out you didn't tell them the whole story. Okay? They're just listening now. Well, y'all need to hear it. You're dealing with someone who is not forthcoming. That's that. Now, all this little drama that's been going on, back and forth, where Heart has dealt with you guys sincerely. I don't have much respect for most of you right now, okay? Because of the way things go down. This is not politics anymore. This is about people getting assistance when they need it so that they can survive. Because we're talking survival, we're at the basic level of survival. That's where most people are at right now. And if you guys don't get it, then you need to get out. You need to walk away. Give it up, because you're not doing the City of Knoxville any good. Okay? Quit trying to create a scenario where it's, we're going to get our way no matter what, and we'll do whatever we have to do to do it, to get it. That time is over with, okay? It's over with. You need to stop.
The third speaker signed up to speak on this is Ms. Tina Sparks. Ms. Sparks, if you could come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and you'll have up to five minutes.
My name is Tina Sparks, but I'm not going to talk, so don't start the clock. I'm going to yield my time to Amelia because she is a professional in this, and you need to listen to her. Put down your phones, put down your devices, look at her and listen to her. You'll have a time to hear me when I come up to speak in favor of Ms. Parker and in the, at public forum, if anybody is still around here to listen to me, but right now, please listen to her.
Ms. Sparks, the rules of council, you've signed up to speak, and you can use your time. If council wants to suspend their rules, they may, but you have your allotted time. It's not council rules to the...
Mayor, a point of order. I believe at the beginning of this, you asked all speakers to gather in the back of the room and determine who would speak. And I believe they're just following your instructions.
Okay, so this will be the third and final. Okay, so this will be the third and final speaker. Okay. Go ahead.
She needs five minutes. She needs five minutes!
Okay. Amelia James, I live in North Knoxville. So obviously, I'm signed up today to speak against this resolution, and I want to say that in general, I'm not opposed to a lot of the content in it, but I am opposed to the fact that it is lacking a vital component, which is community involvement. So this resolution was written without any community involvement, including no involvement from Knoxville Heart, who has been doing this work for three years. Additionally, there is nothing in the resolution that makes clear that community input is vital to the formation of an alternative response team. Now, I'm guessing Councilmember Roberto will say, oh, I did have community involvement, but meeting with CEOs or higher-ups of one or two mental health agencies is not community involvement. When we talk about community involvement, we're talking about people with lived experience, and that is missing from this resolution. So I wanted to share an example from my own life that illustrates how important community buy-in is. I moved to Knoxville five years ago to start the Behavioral Health Program at a nonprofit, which serves a very specific population. And this population has experienced tremendous amounts of oppression from the U.S. government, healthcare professionals, the legal system, and law enforcement. When I was hired, most of my clients were highly skeptical of me. They had no reason to trust me. I worked tremendously hard to gain their trust, and it was a really long process. Now, five years later, I have clients that I see every week, who I've seen for four or five years, and that never would have happened if I hadn't invested the time to gain that trust of this community that I serve. Programs like alternative response fail when they are created without community input and with, and when those alternative response teams are not directed and staffed by people who truly understand the values of alternative response. This program will fail if we do not center people with lived experience along with professionals who truly understand the work. My hope is that you all will amend this bill to include community involvement and support Councilmember Parker's bill, which centers community input. Those two actions that you all can take tonight will go a long way to repairing the trust that was broken with how this bill was presented. Now, in general, in past conversations and meetings, I've heard two main concerns about alternative response in general that I wanted to address. The first concern is that, you know, these alternative response teams would go out and respond to people in crisis, and then they won't have a place to take them, hence the inclusion of the psychiatric hospital in this resolution. This represents a significant misunderstanding of alternative response teams and honestly treats them like a glorified taxi service. Alternative response teams are able to de-escalate, treat, and support people in the community, which follows behavioral health guidelines of maintaining people at the lowest possible level of care. The assumption that all, or even most, people in crisis need psychiatric hospitalization is incorrect. In my five years of working with a highly vulnerable, often unhoused, population, I have only had three instances where I felt a client immediately needed a psychiatric assessment at the hospital. Three people in five years. This is hundreds of clients. Because when we have behavioral health professionals and medics who have the skills to offer proper support in the community, people are often able to stay where they are safely. That is what this program, that's what alternative response is all about. The other concern that's been raised by Councilmember Ryder and potentially others is that we will struggle to staff an alternative response team. The fact that we can't fully staff co-response says much more about the co-response model than anything else. Maybe behavioral health professionals don't want to work alongside police. Maybe the offered salary is an insult to people with a master's-level degree. I personally know medics and behavioral health professionals in this community who are exhausted by working within our current system and would jump at an opportunity to be part of an alternative response team. I can also say that Knoxville can be at the cutting edge of doing something creative. I moved to Knoxville five years ago after seven years away from this state, because I had the opportunity to work in a nonprofit that supported my values and with a population that I care about. There is, I have absolutely no doubt that we will be able to staff these teams, and we'll have so many people who want to work at them. So please, do the right thing tonight, repair some of the trust with community, amend this bill, and support Councilmember Parker's bill. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Roberto.
Thank you, Mayor. I think one of the questions that was asked is why bring this? And I'm just not going to sit back and watch more time go by when we have a very important thing that we need to do. And in the meeting four weeks ago, I laid out and said, we need to amend this so that we can make this work. I want this to work. I think a lot of you in the, in the, in the audience here and at home want this to work. That's what this is about. This resolution is not about names on a piece of paper. It's about a path to success to get us where we're trying to go. The resolution is ultimately, at its core, about people. Very vulnerable people who are in crisis, who need access to care in our community. I want anyone who's listening, maybe watching at home, if you are experiencing a crisis or you know someone who is and you need assistance, you can call 988 to get connected with care. I think that's really important for this discussion today, because I think there's a lot of people listening, and there's a way to deal with, deal with this. Council is working now, on this right now, to provide more access to opportunities for you to get care, but in the meantime, that's where you need to go. I also want to take a minute and acknowledge the work that Hart has done as a champion for an alternative response team's creation in our community, launching these efforts several years ago, and I applaud their efforts in moving this forward. I want also to take some time to talk about what council has done. So we have taken action to address needs in our community, and part of this discussion needs to be about those things that we've already done, as well as what we're committing to do in this resolution. First, I want to highlight the Behavioral Health Urgent Care Center, the B-HU. That has diverted over 2,000 individuals away from our judicial system, providing compassionate, community-based care since 2018. We have also heard mentioning of the co-response team. That pairs a master's-level clinician with a crisis intervention team-trained KPD officer to respond to 911 calls. In nearly three years of existence, this team has responded to over 2,500 calls, forty have been, forty percent have been transported to the ER, and fifty percent of those callers were able to remain in place and linked to resources they needed. Just highlighting the vulnerability of what we're talking about tonight, a third of those callers were experiencing suicidal ideation. Council has also approved the Emergency Psychiatric Assessment Treatment and Healing, or EMPATH. That facility will open at the former St. Mary's campus in 2024. This facility will also be a diversion, but this time diverting people who are in mental health or substance abuse, they need that care, away from the ER, and linking them with the care that they need, where it's more appropriate, because they can't necessarily be properly diagnosed or cared for in that environment. Each of these programs, and many others, which I won't have time to get into today, are the result of partnerships between the city, the county, and the state, just like is proposed in this resolution. This resolution seeks to expand those partnerships and complete the continuum of care by doing several important things. First, provide local, long-term psychiatric hospitalization unit or units to serve low-income or uninsured individuals. That is really critical. Second, is developing a professional business and service delivery plan for an alternative response program, pairing a medic with a crisis worker to respond to 911 calls that don't need the presence of a police officer. This will divert individuals in crisis away from our judicial system and get them the care and the access to services that they require. This resolution moves forward by committing to join, to host a joint workshop with County Commission to review the findings of the sequential intercept mapping exercise and discuss gaps in our current system. Council, in our retreat several years ago, had a discussion about a lot of the challenges that we are seeing and how we want to be able to help. The city has the smallest budget of all of these groups that we're talking about, and we partner with these partners, the county and the state, to provide this kind of care. What council asked in that was to have a joint workshop with the city, the county, and our state representatives. And that meeting was historic. I can't think of a time that's ever happened, and we did it, and it was on this topic. This is seeking to build on that momentum, to build on what we've already been doing, and to accomplish this. It's my goal to strengthen and build up the necessary coalition to complete the continuum of care, a goal that I think everyone in our city shares, and I think everyone on council supports, and I hope my colleagues will support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Smith? Councilmember Parker?
Thank you, Mayor. I am very grateful for these conversations. Even when we do not agree, identifying what issues we do not agree on moves us closer to finding agreement. And so, although I was a little taken aback by the vice mayor's resolution being introduced, at least I was able to see what arguments were being made, you know, regarding alternative response. And I, you know, I sent out some texts to my colleagues, and I sent an email to my contact list, very, very close to the start of this meeting, so many people may not have seen it. But I did have some concerns about how the resolution introduced by the vice mayor is framed, and a couple of different sections of it. For me, this conversation began in 2020, and that this is a continuation of, of conversations that we began in 2020. And when we, you know, when I initially brought a proposal forward for an alternative response team, or discussions around it, it was during a period of time when cities throughout the country were looking to adopt reforms to their policing practices. Here in Knoxville, if you, it's, it's hard to even imagine, but if you look back at our agenda in 2020, we had a workshop just about every other week. And I think we actually had a workshop every other week during the summer of 2020, focused on reimagining policing. And one of the things that we was looking at was, what are the calls we could potentially divert away from KPD? We looked at, right, what, what calls 911 was handling, et cetera. And we were looking at, you know, calls about a suspicious person. We were looking at calls that in the past have led to violent interactions between police officers and community members that were unnecessary. Not that there is a time when violent interactions are necessary, but, but these were unnecessary interactions, and those calls could have been responded to by a non-police person. Those, that's where we began with this conversation of an alternative response. And then those conversations ended, and a conversation about co-responder began. And we haven't had a chance to return to that conversation. So in my proposal that I brought on May 30th, I identify homelessness, substance use, and mental health as three of the broad categories that would be addressed by an alternative response team. Thinking back to the summer of 2022, when these conversations began, and, and we were talking about suspicious persons, in my opinion, that's included under a public health emergency, because a lot of those calls are resulting from community members who are uncomfortable, sometimes just with unknown persons in their community, but quite often, those are black people. Quite often, those calls are made on, on black members of our community. And so, that's another public health emergency that we're experiencing, is when we have individuals in our community whose lives are in danger because of how they're experiencing racism in communities. So that initial conversation around those concerning interactions between police and community members in 2020, continuing on that conversation around homelessness and the KPD's involvement with our community of folks experiencing homelessness, and then expanding that conversation into mental illness, is where I see this conversation going. But unfortunately, the resolution we have before us from the vice mayor limits that conversation back down to only mental health.
Thank you, Ms. Parker. I'm going to come back to you later. I think Councilmember Smith was next.
Thank you. I actually think both, both resolutions have some merit. Under our manner, and there's a lot of part, I think most of them, I agree with both. I think vice mayor's resolution is good, because it is a reflection of the broad continuum required to address any of the three buckets that Councilman Parker that you mentioned, or one. But all of those agencies play a role. It takes all of those things. It takes all the different models for how we care for those. So I think it's an accurate view of the comprehensive nature that is required to move the needle on this issue. I also appreciate Councilman Parker's resolution, that it's acutely focused on alternative response and not waiting for the overall solution to be had. So I think, I may be alone in this, but I think both A and C, I might be getting my numbers wrong, but I think both A and C are worthy of support. I also think that there's a certain aspect of community input that is just consistent and, and valued and obvious to anybody paying attention to this matter. So I think there's merit for both of these. I want to talk about the ends here, just for a second, just a sidestep about, there are no saints here. And so, the idea of questioning motives about where resolutions come from, or who should have brought one to where, I think is, is just genuinely not helpful. I think if you look at how things get done here in this body, it's messy, it's never neat. And if folks felt surprised by vice mayor's resolution, then I would say, I felt surprised by some resolutions recently related to this topic, too. And nobody engaged me quietly and thoughtfully to get my take on anything before it started. So we all live in glass houses, and so what I would ask is that our entire community focus on the substance of the thing we're trying to solve, rather than the sequence of which things are brought to different people. So I just don't think that conversation's helpful. But I do think the merit, which I think is where this actually moves the needle, of both A and C are good. To the extent we merge the two, or to the extent there's pieces of each that get merged, I think I'm happy with both of them, because they each play, in my opinion, complementary roles. And I'm thankful to both councilmembers for bringing these. I'm thankful as well to, for Hart, for elevating the conversation. I think a lot of times, we focus on, if you feel so strongly about something, you should advocate for it. But at some point, you have to step back and look at whether you're focused on making a point or making actual progress. And if you look at the progress that's been made, we weren't talking about this three years ago in this body. We've had workshops on it. We've had a new model that needs to be fully assessed by McNAB and the administration that I think will be informative for an alternative response. And the progress that is hiding in plain sight is that we will likely have some type of alternative response in the near future, and I think that these two resolutions can cohabitate. So that's my view on these two items, and I would suggest that we make progress by pushing forth both of them.
Councilmember McKenzie? And I'll come back to Testerman.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. So I just want to say that I agree, that there are points on both of these resolutions that I agree with, but I have a couple of points of clarification. If Resolution 1A were to be approved... If Resolution 1A were to be approved, it does not circumvent the subsequent resolutions.
Councilmember McKenzie, I mean, I'm not sure that I'm the right person to answer that question. Who are you?
Maybe the law director.
Honestly, I'm not sure either, Councilmember McKenzie. They have some similarities to them, but they do have distinct differences. I mean, Councilmember Parker and Vice Mayor Roberto, I mean, this question for them to answer, that they think there, they probably think there are differences between the two.
I'd love to address that question if possible. There are really two sections of Roberto's resolution that I feel conflict with my resolution. And I believe it's the 11th and 12th wheresses. It's actually, one of the wheresses Mr. Harrington brought up, which is about the need for a multi-jurisdictional effort and the need for cross-jurisdictional support. Based on the research that I've done, cities have especially started out and implemented pilot programs without making that determination about the scope, whether it's multi-jurisdictional or not. Some have started out as a regional project, and they start out multi-jurisdictional, and they move forward. But what I've proposed is one that's focused on the city of Knoxville specifically. And I'm concerned that if we define what is needed as having to be multi-jurisdictional, we miss an opportunity to be able to investigate what a smaller, local, very localized alternative response could look like and how it could benefit Knoxville.
Clarification. You know, what I will say is, I don't disagree with you as relates to the city focus, but I do agree that we have to apply pressure at our levels of jurisdiction because at the end of the day, that is what is required if we ever want to see the level of psychiatric hospitalization that unfortunately is needed. And so with all the energy that's brought to city, so I hope that that energy also will be brought to county commission and to the state because they have a responsibility in this as well and some accountability. I'd also like to, and I do think that, you know, they should be engaged or at least invited to conversations as it relates to these topics, whether they come or take action, but I think it's good for them to see the support. I'd also like to ask, and I don't know if this is law director, if it's councilmember Parker and Vice Mayor Roberto, is there an opportunity for us to work together, even through mediation, through the law director, to look at how we can combine these resolutions? It just feels that if we have two resolutions out there, that it's just kind of going to be a little counterproductive in a sense. And so, you know, as Vice Mayor Roberto's does not include experiencing homelessness, which I do believe is very important to be addressed here as well. And so I'd like to pose that question if there is, if you all would be open to mediation through the law director to say, how can we combine the things in both of them rather than having two resolutions that are out there?
Vice Mayor Roberto?
Thank you. And I appreciate the questions from Councilmember McKenzie. The first question you were talking about is this differential between the two, which Councilmember Parker identified. All of the programs that, you know, I've talked about, and every other program I've seen and when I've been talking to providers, all of them have support from the city, the county, and the state. None of them is a single action. So I think the delineation here is, one proposal is saying, let's just have the city do this. The other one is saying, let's continue to have cross-jurisdictional approach. That's what's been successful. That's what council asked when we did the joint workshop with the county and with the state. That's what, when I've talked to providers, they have all said the same thing. We have to go this route. Is it easy to just talk to one body? Sure, it's easy. But it's also easy for that not to be successful. The way that I see this being successful, it's critical that we have this, we continue our progress that we've made. So I can't negotiate on that piece because it will fail. And that's why I felt like I needed to bring this. The other piece is, you know, what is intended for the alternative response team to respond to? You know, I think it's going to be a community-based team that is trained to respond to issues like mental health crisis, substance abuse, and people who are experiencing homelessness. You know, it doesn't say that in the resolution, but it definitely implies it because everything I'm talking about is, you know, low income or uninsured individuals, and that's what we're dealing with. We're dealing with a lot of people who are in a bad situation. That's what this is about. It's about people. And so, you know, if people want to make sure it's spelled out, that we say those different groups, that's fine. But that's the intention here. That's what I'm trying to do. But I appreciate the question.
I feel like I should...
Yeah. Ms. Parker and several other councilmembers who've had their lights on a while. Go ahead, Ms. Parker, if you could.
I just wanted to provide one clarification. My resolution does not suggest that the city will go it alone. My suggestion suggests that the city will create the table at which others will come for planning. Also, you know, my resolution uplifts some other partnerships that the city has. One is, when we're talking about homelessness, one is VMC Street Outreach Team, which could be a very similar type of partnership where it is community-based, they do receive city support, but they also receive funding from other agencies. Receiving funding from other agencies, identifying where there are funding opportunities, is a much different situation than saying, we have to have a program that includes the county and the state. That hampers us too much, in my opinion. You know, moving to, also I wanted to say quickly, the idea behind the task force was to explore all of these issues. So the purpose of the task force was to bring all of these voices into a room and determine what does the funding landscape look like? What level of collaboration is needed for this to be successful? Can it operate similar to a street outreach team, or does it need to operate more like a 911 dispatched mumble crisis center? That's an opportunity for us to toss all of these ideas around and come up with a more clear proposal. What we're doing through this process is trying to pool as much information as we have together to already define what type of alternative response program we want to pursue. And I just don't think we have gotten there as a city. I think we need space to further discuss what that looks like without, you know, without mandating that that has to be multi-jurisdictional, when that just may not even be possible in Knoxville.
Councilmember Ryder?
I feel like there's a lot of people talking past each other and deciding that we disagree when we agree on some things. I had that conversation with someone today about why not support this resolution, why not support that resolution. And the end of the conversation, I felt that the conversation was, we agree on more than we disagree on. And I feel like there's some paradigm issues of people working from different paradigms. So I think it's unfortunate it's come down to anger and blame. And I have a lot of questions, I have a lot of comments, and I'm really, really not sure where to start. I'm going to start with one of the points, and I'm going to go ahead and just say out loud, it doesn't matter what I say, there's going to be a contingent of people who've decided I'm wrong before I even start talking. No matter what I say, it's wrong. And you go ahead and laugh. I get it, because you're right there heckling me all day long, every day. Hey, and thanks when you came to my house and did it at my house, too. Come on back. My kids thought it was hilarious.
Members of the public, councils conducting business.
Apparently.
Ms. Ryder, you have the floor.
Yep, yep, yep.
Members of the audience, you may not disrupt a public meeting, or you may be asked to leave. Ms. Ryder, continue with your comments.
I'm wrong. Peace out. I'm going to keep going, though, okay? Thanks. I got three and a half minutes, so we can do it this way? Because that's clearly what you want to do.
Ms. Ryder, go ahead and share your...
So I don't recall in any of my conversations with Hart, and I don't recall any of my colleagues saying they were opposed to alternative response. I recall having lots of conversation with Hart this spring and various members of Hart about funding and getting programming funding and getting programming funded and getting something in the budget. That's what I was anticipating this spring, this budget cycle. And instead, it was a task force, okay? But it was the dollar figure that I had questions about for the staff, or who was managing it, or whatever. When we left the last council meeting after two hours of discussion, I was expecting edits to that resolution. Instead, at 10 o'clock on a Thursday night, I got an entirely different resolution that was about having a meeting in 2024. Then there's another resolution about bringing partners to the table to help fund an alternative response with no dictation of what that alternative response is. And we wouldn't be here in this point in this conversation and debating this, two hours that the last time we discussed it in a meeting and today, without the efforts of Hart. And so you get full credit for that, of continuing the conversation and not being satisfied with the fact that we're just doing co-response. This community, many years ago, for people that were involved, we had the 10-year plan, which got very much sidetracked and I think had a poor name to start with, where there was an effort to do permanent supportive housing in different parts of the city. And I went to an incredibly, incredibly ugliest public meeting I've ever been to, where there were people who were like, you can't put that in our part of town, in our neighborhood. And that's when the 10-year plan got tanked. That was many years ago, and there are probably people in this room that were there and/or knew about it or heard about it. And if you haven't, I'd like to fill you in on details, and there's plenty in the media about it. We have come a long way from public, whether they're state officials or county officials, walking up to us, city elected officials, and saying, I saw people who are homeless. I saw people like this or like that in my neighborhood. What are you doing about it? What is the city doing about it? The city has spent a great amount of capacity building to get the county and the state to be partners, whether it's in funding or in other capacities. The county has been part, the county hired a social worker to help go out and do some response. The county has now hired a staff person to coordinate with our outreach coordinator. The county and the state have come up with money for this empath, which I think I heard in some of the comments, and maybe there's just a misunderstanding, that that's somehow new to this Resolution 11A. It's not. That money was approved, and the press releases are from 2022. We were just waiting on the people that were in the building to move out and get it started. There's opportunities to build partnerships from that or any other nonprofit around town. There's been a tremendous amount of effort to build partnerships and capacity with other park partners who have a role in mental health response. Not that that necessarily means psychiatric incarceration, but in responding to people who are in crisis. I think that this is the path forward. Okay.
You can turn your light on back after I just... Ms. Testerman?
Thank you. You know, first, let me say, I mean, again, I think we all concur. I mean, I definitely, you know, mental health is absolutely paramount. It is at the core of most of our city's most critical issues. So, I mean, I certainly think we all agree on that. And sadly, we don't have enough resources to address what we're facing with that. I do have a few questions. Going back in 11A, that resolution, and the $50,000 that is committed, I am curious about who would be charged with developing the business and service delivery plan that's referenced in that resolution.
Vice Member Roberto?
Well, it looked like Deputy Mayor Gill was about to answer that question. I can do it, too, but go ahead.
Ms. Gill?
Sure. Well, I'm happy to jump in because the $50,000 reference is in specific regard, Mayor, to the pledge that you made at the last discussion on May 30th. And so in describing that a little more fully, you'll notice the kind of, again, emphasis on the fact that we need to see other partners at the table. We anticipate that that $50,000 doesn't get us as far as we need to when it comes to the level of detail and professional analysis that would need to be done to design such a concept. And so we would be looking and expecting that other partners would match that with us. In just the last few weeks, as this conversation has continued to unfold and we've continued to talk to our existing partners, some of which have been mentioned, not only is there openness to exploring some concepts like that, but there's also been some opportunities mentioned in terms of where that additional funding may come from in the form of grants. But again, we want to emphasize that that is offered as a starting point, but it ought not be the end-all in terms of describing what kind of a foundational partnership would need to look like in order to do that analysis. Does that maybe help? And I'm happy to offer Vice Mayor a chance to chime in there as well.
And one, I understand, is it Leigh Anne Hilliard, I think, here from Helen Ross?
Is anyone here from McNabb Center?
No, no. We spoke with them, and no, they're not able to be here.
Okay. Again, I have a lot of, I was told that she was going to be here. But again, I just have some questions. I mean, they're referenced in this resolution, asked the same question when we talked about it last, and I really would just like to hear about their weigh-in on this and, you know, where they stand, you know? So...
I'm happy to paraphrase some of our recent conversations, if you'd like me.
Ms. Gill, can you share, or Vice Member Roberto, have you spoken to McNabb about this? You want to tell your colleagues what your conversations were like?
Thank you, Mayor. Since we had the charge from council at our retreat to have that joint workshop with all of these partners, the county and the state, you know, I worked to get that organized. We had providers, you know, I can't even think of how many providers we had. You all were here. To do that, we had, you know, our state general assembly colleagues, as well as all of our county commissioners here. After that, I continued those conversations, talking about things that we need in our community. It was that collaboration that brings this resolution. I mean, the discussions I've had were, you know, there's a level of detail in there that I don't possess that information without being out, going out and seeking it and having conversations with folks. I'm not going to say any one organization says they're going to support one thing or another. But this is coming from a place of having those discussions, and I'm really grateful for, you know, folks that have come here to say they're supportive of it. And I'm very grateful for my colleagues who are supportive of this as well.
Okay.
Ms. Testerman?
I've got more to say, but my time's out, so I'll put my light back on.
Okay. Councilmember Singh?
Thank you. I want to start with something that...
If you could just speak closer into your microphone.
That Councilwoman Ryder was talking about. You know, there were different resolutions coming through on different days, and I wasn't sure if Ms. Parker's resolutions were going to be coming. I didn't, you know, it was just a bit confusing. And I saw 11A, and what I saw was a whole lot of things that I agreed with. These are things that we want. What I do have an issue with is I feel like it pushes the alternative response team or idea farther back, like we have to wait for other things to happen before we start doing that. I think it's completely correct that we need a mental health facility, we need more money, we need more partners. But if we wait for that... But if we wait for that, we're pushing this back. The other question I have is about the coresponder idea team. Can someone speak to how that was created? Who was involved in that conversation? Were the city and the county, I mean, the county and the state involved? Were we waiting for a place that we could take the people to that the coresponder team interacted with?
Ms. Gill?
Yes, and there may be other folks, and maybe Chief Powell, I don't know if you have some of this history, too, but I'll try to speak to what I can. So, in particular, the concept of co-response had been one that was identified in, I believe it was a 2015 sequential intercept mapping process that really identified the B-huck. And out of those partnerships arose this kind of emerging concept that partners were seeing in other cities around co-response. And so, you know, there was a active conversation, as I understand it, between KPD leadership as well as McNab leadership to recognize a potential partnership. You know, these are two partners who work together regularly on our crisis intervention training for officers, and that program has continued to become more robust. And the, you know, this idea of an emerging model that really was an opportunity to move a little more quickly on account of some of that legwork that had already been done and those partnerships that had already been formed. You'll recall, council, that when we were in that season of regular workshops back in 2020, that really took forth this proposal of saying, "Hey, why don't we try it?" And McNab, in particular, being a provider who was willing to do this through a contract wherein they would provide the staff and overhead administrative support to a behavioral health clinician to ride along in the kind of equipment and foundation framework of a KPD model.
Ms. Gill, because I've limited time on the show.
So, anyway, so we did the pilot, and then we expanded it.
So, we did not wait for the state or the county to add funds, and we did not wait to get a facility in place first.
I think we were building what we already had, and it was a specific contract you will call for $90,000 to be able to launch that program.
The other piece, I don't remember if we had a workshop on co-responder model. COVID has happened since then.
I think it was discussed in one of those workshops.
I know we had a discussion about it during the council meeting, but I don't believe we had a workshop.
Yeah, we did.
Mr. Smith says we did.
We did. There's a packet, and McNab spoke.
Okay, okay. All right, so that's good. Yeah, so I like all three resolutions. I think we can pass all three. I would just want to make an amendment about making, clarifying on 11A some that we're not waiting for these two other pieces before we start investigating and doing the work of trying to figure out how to find partners to do it. That would be my request.
Council, Vice Member Roberto?
Thank you, Mayor. I just, you know, I appreciate the questions and the support for this. The intention of this resolution is not to push back alternative response at all or to say that we're not going to move forward. It's about a path that does create success and where we can move forward. I have had quite some time now sitting with all of you and, you know, considering things and debating things fully and thoughtfully, and I have a lot of faith in each one of you. And I know that we can walk and chew gum at the same time. So, there is no issue from my perspective. We see an acute need in our community, and that's what this is addressing. It's saying, "We see an opportunity now to address these issues," just like you had said, that you agree with, these things that need to happen. They don't detract from anything. This is the way you complete the continuum of care. I think having all of this together, this entire package, is the way to go, using the, you know, leveraging these relationships with the county and the state. That's what we're going to have to do to have this be successful, like every other program that we've talked about. So, it doesn't push it back at all. And I'm highlighting it because it's important. I think there is a vital role for alternative response. And so I just wanted to make sure that was clear, so you didn't think that I'm trying to prioritize one over the other.
Council, Councilmember Singh, I guess you still have...
Oh, do I still have time? Okay.
Or was that for Ms... Oh, that was for Vice Member Roberto. Let me go to Mrs. Thomas, and we can come back to you if you still have comments. Councilmember Thomas?
Yes. There's some information that I need, and I want some clarification. Is anybody here who would be a spokesman for HART, maybe Ms. Conley or whoever could feel like you could act as a spokesman or spokesperson, I should say? Now, HART, of course, is a major player. And then Helen Ross McNab got in early on the alternative response. And as I said when I supported that, I didn't preclude the proposals that you're talking about, the alternative response. It's been a long night. Have you and/or your organization and Helen Ross McNab got in the same room and actually talked all this out?
We have a meeting in two weeks.
But as of yet, you haven't done it.
I do want to say, though, that from the beginning of these conversations, we did talk with McNab back in 2020.
Right.
And what we heard from them, from the higher-ups at McNab, from multiple people, was they were not at all interested in alternative response. And we heard a very clear, not only are we not interested in it now, but we'll never be interested in it now. Of course, things could have changed.
Where did you hear that from?
From, I don't, I think the, like, CEO and one of, like, their directors. So, this idea that we haven't involved them in this process, it's because from the beginning, they said they weren't interested in this. So, that was truly not us saying, "We refuse to talk with McNab." It was them saying, "We're doing co-response only, and we don't ever want to be involved in alternative response. Now, we'll meet with them in a couple weeks. We'll see what they have to say."
Okay, yeah. I'm just trying to gather information, because there's been a disconnect in my mind, what's going on here. And that's been the stumbling block, the main stumbling block for me, about how to put these pieces together. And I think, no matter whose fault it is, you know, whether it's yours groups or Helen Ross McNab, it's unfortunate, to say the least, that these two groups haven't gotten together a long time ago and sat in the same room and talked all this out. To me, that's what's hanging me up, is Helen Ross McNab. I got tremendous amount of respect for them. Their headquarters is in my district. I've seen their work for years. They have a track record that's impeccable, almost, you know, if anybody does. I've got a lot of respect for HART for bringing this, and my sympathies are with an alternative response team. What is puzzling to me, and the big stumbling block for me, is there hasn't been a dialogue where you two groups are talking. And speaking only for myself, that's what's hanging me up. I can't figure out which direction to go in or split into two directions. So, you know, I'm not sure, to be honest about it, what position to take until two of the major players actually sit down and talk to each other. And it may come out that you can't agree on anything, but that's a piece of the puzzle that I need to know.
Sure. I just, again, want to say that McNab kind of removed themselves from this conversation early on. They have not ever reached out to us. They don't show up here when we're having these conversations. And also, HART is composed of all volunteers, whereas McNab has a massive staff, right? So, I think holding HART to the same account as one of our largest organizations in this community is maybe a little unfair, when we've put in hundreds, if not thousands, of unpaid hours the past three years.
Yeah, absolutely. I don't disagree with that at all. I've seen it. And so I don't have a problem with that, but it doesn't take a lot of hours for two groups to sit down and get in the same room.
Well, I also want to say, our original idea of it...
If it's their fault, or if they're not giving you that opportunity, that's not on you. I'm just trying to get information. That's all I'm trying to do.
I also just want to add, our original idea of the task force is that all of these people would be at a table, including McNab. So, like, that's our desire. That's the idea that we originally supported, is we want people to all be able to come together at one table. And that's really hard to organize without something formal like a task force.
Thank you. Mr. Thomas, your time is up for the moment. Councilmember Testerman?
So, I want to piggyback on what Councilmember Thomas said, because I remember distinctly at the last council meeting that HART was not talking to Helen Ross because of their involvement in the co-responder model, because of the law enforcement affiliation. And so, you know, that bothered me again, because Helen Ross is the obvious organization to pee a part of this solution. And I go back to, you know, the co-responder model as well. You know, what is our plan to continue investing in that? Would certainly rather see funding allocated to that, because we've started it, and certainly don't want to abandon it. And it's still in its infancy and needs to be far more robust to be completely effective. And as well, you know, I'm open to alternative response teams, but I'm also not supportive at the expense of law enforcement and taking funding from law enforcement to, who potentially fund an ART. And I just, again, I'm fact-finding, because, again, I would like to know other cities that have done alternative response teams, done it well, but it's been a completely separate line item that hasn't impeded on public safety dollars. So, again, those are some. And I guess what I heard from HART earlier in talking, and I feel like Councilmember Smith brought this up at the last meeting as well, is, you know, we're not in the business of providing direct health care. And, you know, it was said earlier that they felt very confident that they could staff it, that those staffing issues were there. And again, you know, don't disagree. You've got BMC Street Outreach, you've got other organizations that are doing community-based outreach. So, again, the collaboration of different organizations. And, you know, what precludes HART from forming a 501(c)(3), raising funds, staffing, and implementing an alternative response team themselves and in collaboration with other organizations that they see fit? You know, I go back to resources, and there are not going to be any more resources available than are now. I mean, obviously, we want to bolster those. So, I'm just, I'm trying to, again, better understand, you know, some of the intricacies on what that model is. And I'm just hearing bits and pieces, and I feel like if it's been talked about for three years, there would be a little more structure on what it looks like. And I guess I'm just not hearing it. To Councilmember Thomas's point, some critical, crucial conversations haven't even been had with the experts in this field, in this community.
Thank you. I guess, was Councilmember Smith or Councilmember McKenzie?
Thank you, Mayor. This question's for Chief Noel. Chief Noel, could you remind us of the co-responder team days and hours?
Yes, ma'am. So, our co-responder team, we work from about 7:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m., seven days a week when fully staffed. Fully staffed is four police officers and four clinicians working together. Right now, Helen Ross McNab only has two clinicians hired for the co-response team. I've been informed that they have just hired a third employee recently, who's in training, who will be onboarded and start responding to calls around July 9th. And they have a fourth employee in the pipeline to come on staff right now that will be hired soon.
Also, what happens if after 11:00 p.m., a call comes in and someone has a family member who's having a mental health crisis and being aggressive? What happens?
Sure. You know, and before I answer that, my long-term goal would be to have the co-response team fully staffed with about, you know, 12 teams working in each district around the clock, so we would always have them available. But if our co-responder team is not available, either if they're on another call, if someone is, you know, someone is not available, we have crisis intervention team-trained officers, CIT officers, that are all available now. EMS is available. The fire department has medics that are CIT certified as well. We would get one of our CIT officers out there to handle that call.
Can you confirm whether or not there's any questions that are asked that would indicate some indicators prior to dispatch?
Sure. So, our 911 team at E911, they have a series of protocol questions they ask when people call 911. And it varies based upon the incident, but, you know, if someone is calling with about a mental incident or a mental crisis, they'll ask questions about whether they believe they're dangerous to themselves or others, whether they have access to the firewall, questions like that. Questions right off a checklist.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to kind of follow up on comments from earlier. I think Vice Mayor's resolution gives a comprehensive view of reality of what we have to achieve together with the entire community. There's a session involved in that. How many ever sessions it takes, I don't know, but everybody that has to be at the table is in that resolution. I think Councilwoman Parker's resolution, at least 11c, has a specific focus on alternative response and puts that out there at a future date that we can pursue. I think that my recommendation would be that we pass both and that we use the opportunity for the next few months for a reset, where everybody can come open-minded to work with other organizations. Everyone is welcomed into any of those conversations, and that there be a possible path for learning from one another for a future alternative response program. To me, the future is down that path, and there's an opportunity here to reset and collaborate in an earnest way. That's my final two cents.
Thank you. Ms. Parker?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going back a few comments to the conversation with Deputy to the Mayor, Aaron Gill. But this conversation about how there are potential partners in the community who already expressed interest in the last few weeks. This is exactly why this proposal was brought forward. This is exactly why a task force was called for. For the last three years, there's been confusion and aggravation and frustration in the community about whether the city of Knoxville leadership, city council, support an alternative response team or not. And if we're willing to put in the work to help our city realize one, just in the last four weeks, we have absolutely gotten on the same page that we are in support of alternative response. That is major. That gives potential partners, potential funders, a heads up. I don't know if you all received calls. I received calls, today especially, but over the last week, from cities all across the country wanting to support Knoxville in implementing alternative response. Sending me reports, sending me ideas for, you know, where to find money. As soon as we express our support of this, additional support comes. So, already, we've achieved the number-one goal of bringing this resolution forward was getting us all on the same page so that we could attract additional funding and partners to this effort. And I just wanted to, you know, clarify that this, in my opinion, was to begin a conversation. I never imagined or hoped or planned to bring a fully fleshed-out proposal for how we would adopt alternative response in the city of Knoxville. My proposal was to start a conversation and bring all of the players to the table to see what is possible in our city. What I've seen in other cities is an initial investment made by the city to get... What I've seen in other cities is an initial investment made by the city to get something started. The city may even fund a pilot program, and then additional funding is more accessible once we have all of that data and we can show how successful alternative response can be in Knoxville. So, I don't know what the level of commitment needs to be from the City of Knoxville moving forward, but I just wanted to give you all a heads-up that where I've seen cities successfully adopt an alternative response program, there is an initial investment by the city, but additional partners and additional funding definitely will follow after that. I would prefer to see an amendment to the resolution. I think that it will help us with clarity moving forward about some of those next steps. I would love to still see a task force come out of this process, perhaps after, you know, a few months of further research and study, and then a public hearing. But even if we don't get the amendments, because I'm not sure where we're at with that, I feel confident that the community will continue to show up and continue to tell us what they need and continue to work towards, you know, the program that we need in this city. And if that means the city taking the lead because other agencies are dragging their feet, then that's what we have to do. Because I really believe in this program. I've seen, not only from data from other cities, but also hearing the stories from community members here in Knoxville. I truly believe that this can have a real benefit. Parents who've called me since this resolution has been introduced and said, "I have a child who has a substance use issue. I need a number to call for help. I do not feel comfortable calling 911 as of now." Other examples of people who've called me and said, "We need another option." And it kind of surprises me, the background and demographics, it's all over the board, y'all. It's all over the board. So, I hope that we can reach some consensus tonight and move the conversation about alternative response forward in Knoxville.
Vice Mayor Roberto?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say that we have so many people here with us tonight, but also watching at home, who are definitely supportive of what we're talking about with alternative response, with the need for these hospitalization unit or units in our community. And that's what this resolution is about. And there is a lot of time where there's a lot of division and a lot of difference of opinion from a lot of people, but there's not a lot of that here tonight. That's not what council members are talking about. When I'm hearing input, there's not, that's not what's going on. That's not what this resolution is about. I wanted to also mention, you know, there's discussion about some, you know, caution about, hey, should we involve other partners, which we've done in the past and successfully. We've done that. That, you know, maybe they're not going to come to the table. And I just haven't gotten a chance to mention this yet, but I've been in discussions with County Commission Chair Duret, and they're ready to go. They want to have a workshop on August 3rd on these topics, because I've shared with them what's going on here. So, we don't have to wait to do anything else. We're ready to move and have a very full discussion about all of this. We don't have to wait any longer. And that's why I ultimately brought this. This needs to happen. We need to move this forward. And this is the path to get it done. And I definitely invite, and have always intended to invite, Hart to come and participate in that joint workshop, just like everyone else needs to. We need to have all those partners come in and have that discussion. And I hope that we can pass this unanimously, because that statement is what gets this done. It inspires our providers to apply for grants that then can fund what we're talking about, and we can then communicate in one voice, which is what I was advocating for four weeks ago. In one voice, "We want to do this," and then come to that table. Let's have that discussion. And that's what really needs to happen tonight. Let's move this forward. Let's get this done. Let's get it done now. And then we can have more conversations about, you know, if there's other things that we need to be doing as we're going there. But I see an opportunity here, and I'm just not willing to sit and not do anything about it when I know that we can pass something unanimously tonight, and I hope we will. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Singh?
Thank you. I also want this to pass unanimously. So, I have a couple amendments I'd like to make, and I'm trying to figure out, it's in the last three whereas's. Yes, resolution A. Yeah. I'm trying to figure out the wording. It says, it doesn't sound like it's conditional. I want to remove anything that's conditional, that we have to begin only after there is a, other agencies involved, other governments involved. So...
I think you're looking at, whereas Knoxville City Council recognizes that to be successful, such a program requires cross-jurisdictional cooperation and support, a sustainable funding model.
Right, actually, the one above it.
Okay.
Knoxville City Council supports a multi-jurisdictional effort to explore how an alternative program could serve. So, I'd just like it to say, supports an effort to explore. And in the next one...
It does say that. It says Knoxville City Council supports a multi-jurisdictional effort to explore how an alternative response program could serve the greater Knoxville community with rapid onsite crisis response that's integrated with E911 dispatch.
No, I'm saying, remove the words "multi-jurisdictional" from that one. That we support an effort. It may end up being multi-jurisdictional, but right now, we're just supporting the effort.
I don't have a problem with doing that, especially if we leave the next paragraph alone. You know, the approach that is going to work is going to be multi-jurisdictional. You know, if we just want to say blanket, "We support an effort to doing this," I don't have a problem with that amendment. I say that's a friendly amendment.
Okay. So, I'll compromise with you. Recognizes that the suc... We can recognize that a successful program would be best with cross-jurisdictional, but we're not waiting for that to happen before we start exploring.
I don't want to wait at all, which is why I'm bringing this and why I've already been working on trying to get a workshop set up on August 3rd.
Okay. I just had another suggestion on that one. It encourages a multi-jurisdictional support instead of that to be successful.
Okay, so it's going to say Knoxville City Council recognizes...
That jurisdictional cooperation and support would be helpful. Would... Actually, let's leave that one alone and go to the upper one. I'm sorry.
That's okay. Well, that's what it's like when we're, you know, doing this in a meeting.
I think it sends us in the right direction if, whereas Knoxville City Council supports an effort to explore how an alternative response program could serve the greater Knoxville community with rapid onsite crisis response that's integrated with E911. So, it's just removing those two words, the "multi-jurisdictional," from that. We can leave it in other places. Just to me, this feels like we're not waiting for that to happen before we put an effort forward.
And I don't have any problem with that. Like I said, I think that's a friendly amendment.
Councilmember Singh, just so you know, I think that multi-jurisdictional is a really important component to the success of this. That's like we, once upon a time, Mobile Crisis Unit was launched, and that was a multi-jurisdictional effort. Anything that has to do with 911... Excuse me, please do not interrupt the... From the audience, you're not allowed to interrupt the business of the city, but we will ask you to leave. So, I just think that, you know, Vice Mayor Roberto put that language in because that's what is important to, you know, to the successes of this. The city going alone, we, it's different from the co-response team, because, you know, we, it was a law enforcement partner response, and we know how to do that. This requires integration with the ambulance and the 911 and like, you know, all the Health Department and everything else.
Then we can discuss this soon.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. So, I make the motion, put the motion forward, that this pass, but remove just those two words, "multi-jurisdictional."
In the third whereas from the bottom?
Yes.
Yes. And I would second that motion, and I appreciate your collaboration on this. Thank you. We'll change the word "a" to "and."
I'm sorry. There's been a motion to amend. It's been made and seconded. Do you want, does everyone understand what the amendment is? Because I'm not sure I do.
I think it says, it's going to say Knoxville City Council supports an effort to explore how an alternative response program could serve the greater Knoxville community with rapid onsite crisis response that is integrated in E911 dispatch. Is that right? Okay.
Can you reread that? Just, could you read that again?
It's not saying that a multi-jurisdictional would not be a good idea.
So, it's going to, so it'll say, whereas Knoxville City Council supports an effort to explore how an alternative response program could serve the greater Knoxville community with rapid onsite crisis response that is integrated with E911 dispatch.
Yes.
And that's on the fly.
It's hard to do this in real time.
It feels like some of our meetings from several years back.
Mr. Johnson, would you care to repeat the motion?
So, the motion that I have is to simply to strike out the words "multi-jurisdictional."
That's correct.
Change "a" to "and."
Yes.
Thank you, Will.
Councilmember Fugit speaking on the amendment.
I have a question. I think I understood, and Councilwoman Singh, if I'm wrong, I'm sure you'll correct me. I think your motion was that take it out there, but leave it in the next whereas?
That's my compromise.
Okay. Because, because I think that, you know, is important for us to... I appreciate you making that compromise. Because it says, "We also are acknowledging that we think it will work best that way, but we're willing to start exploring now." I think that was your intent.
Exactly.
Let's vote.
Any further questions or comments on this amendment? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The amendment passes. Now, back to the original motion as amended. Any further questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, next item. You want to go through, go through B and C, or do we want to take a recess? Go through it? Okay, let's do B and C.
11b is a resolution recognizing the need for additional trauma-informed services to address mental health, substance use, and homelessness in the City of Knoxville, to express the intent of council to create an alternative response team task force to develop and propose a plan to pilot the strategic implementation of alternative response in the City of Knoxville.
I'm going to move to withdraw.
Motion's made to withdraw, has been made and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion, well, if it's being withdrawn, you know, then we can move to the same... Okay. All those, I think, I'm sorry, all those in favor of the motion to withdraw, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, item C.
11(c) is a resolution recognizing the need for additional trauma-informed services to address mental health, substance use, and homelessness such as E, excuse me, 911 dispatched alternative response program, and setting a date for a public hearing on the issue of alternative response.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion made to approve and seconded. There are some people who signed up to speak in favor of this. I'll call on the first three per council's rules. First person signed up to speak in favor of 11(c) is Rick Roach. Not here. Second person is Tina Sparks. She's not here?
Yeah.
Okay. Third person is Alex Riffold, Ms. Riffold. Come to the podium.
Hi, good evening. Alex Riffold, 5522 Dogwood Road. I am here to voice my support for Resolution 11(c), which was written with, written by Councilwoman Amelia Parker in collaboration with Knoxville Heart. When council voted to postpone Parker's task force resolution last month, our goal was to find a resolution that would receive consensus. We've made some concessions, like removing the entire task force from the resolution. The amount of collaboration and compromise we've been willing to do has been pretty high. This resolution was created with the feedback we heard from other council members. If this resolution does not pass, it's really hard to imagine that members of Knoxville Heart will feel like collaborating and compromising as much as we have again. I know that's hard to hear, but just imagine the situation that we're in, where we, everyone knew that Amelia's resolution was coming when we did the postponement. But we are very heartened to see that alternative response garnered such community and council support. Knoxville really wants alternative response, and that's really what I get from these meetings and what I really appreciate. Resolution 11(c) would help our community members feel heard, respected, and a part of the process by giving key groups a seat at the table. Resolution 11(c) encourages the City of Knoxville to explore the feasibility of alternative response. This is the process that the majority of council endorsed at our meeting in May. Resolution 11(c) expresses its intent to co-host with Knox County Commission a joint workshop to review the findings of the sequential intercept mapping exercise and other relevant data as requested by Vice Mayor Roberto. Resolution 11(c) reaffirms City Council's commitment to support, supporting a continued increase in the percentage of the city budget dedicated to addressing the root causes of societal ills and advancing trauma-informed services as expressed in Resolution 118, 2021, introduced by Councilwoman Singh. Resolution 11(c) commits to a public hearing in January of next year as requested by the community. Resolution 11(c) is the right first step in our journey to implementing an alternative response program that will save lives. It is made through collaboration and compromise. Resolution 11(c) is reimagining public safety. Thank you.
Next person signed up to speak in favor of this is Elizabeth Johnson. Ms. Johnson?
Good evening. My name is Elizabeth Johnson, and I live on Granger Avenue. And I'm here tonight as a resident of District 4, and also as a social scientist who does community-engaged research and who studies how contact with the criminal legal system affects children and families. As I shared at the last council meeting, I think it's essential for us to expand how we think about safety and how we respond to people in crisis. And I'm really heartened, no pun intended, to hear that so many members of the council feel similarly. It feels really good to have this common ground. I'm back tonight to join others in underscoring the critical importance of community voices and lived expertise in the process of developing an alternative response program. In a recent article on alternative response programs that was published in one of the most highly-regarded public health journals, an interdisciplinary group of scholars noted that one, if not the most important strategy for doing this work, is to directly involve impacted communities in program development, implementation, oversight, and evaluation. In other words, it's essential for the council and any others who are involved in this effort to very deliberately create and then hold spaces for input from individuals who've been affected by traditional responses and who stand to benefit from alternative approaches. For this work to work, members of the community need to feel connected and respected and valued at all stages of this process, starting now as we set the intentions for it. Supporting Resolution 11(c) and creating a pathway for meaningful community engagement would go a long way towards building the foundation of mutual respect that will be essential for ensuring the success of an alternative response program in Knoxville. Thank you.
Next person signed up to speak is Tyler Givens.
Hey, I made it. Good evening, Tyler Givens. I live in Knoxville. Just quickly, Janet, alternative response saves police time and money. It does not defund police. They don't have the manpower to respond to auto accidents, and alternative response would be helping them with that. And I just want to say, as Tommy said, we should advocate for solutions. And I just want to say, as Tommy said, we should advocate for solutions, and like Gwen said, we have to apply some pressure, or nothing will get done. After three years of community activists researching and consulting with experts, after three years of community activists speaking and writing to council members and the mayor, after three years of people who are doing the work, caring for the castaways of our society, begging for the city to help, now, now that the pressure is on, now that the pressure has come to the head, a coalition led by Andrew Roberto wants to co-op this momentum to protect the status quo. The reason we are here now is because you all got this wrong with the co-responder model. This time, you need to open your ears and listen. Roberto's resolution is just a way to keep doing what you're already doing, and to be able to blame the county and the state for the lack of proper public services in Knoxville like you often do. That is why India broke into the debate rules, broke the debate rules, to insist that the phrase multi-jurisdictional stays in the resolution, because many of you claim to be allies of LGBTQ plus people, but Glenn Jacobs is out there spouting bigoted rhetoric, and you want us to depend on his government to be a full partner in our alternative response team. We all know you love working with the county when it comes to enriching your friends, but even you all should be able to see that this is not a proper partner for this relationship. Also, Helen Ross McNabb works for the city and at the pleasure of her people, not the other way around. No one from McNabb was even here tonight. A private entity should not dictate how the people's, how the people's government handles community members in crisis. The people should decide through their representatives. But y'all are not doing a good job of representing us. You're doing a fantastic job of representing Helen Ross McNabb, even though they decided not to show up. Y'all paid McNabb for a sequential intercept model study, and then you sat on it until the community and the troublemaker on the council actually used the results to come up with a plan. So now you want to sit down with the county and discuss. The data probably throws our failures right back in our faces, but you want someone to share that blame with. You want to be able to throw up your hands and blame Glenn Jacobs and Bill Lee when alternative response fails to materialize. Alternative response is less costly than inpatient care. I guess that also means maybe it's less profitable. This resolution doesn't dissemble. It lays out the issues with facts and data in the preamble. It proposes a path to a solution, and it lays out some funding to do so. And most importantly, it directly addresses the issue of houselessness that has exploded under this mayor's administration. The vice mayor had plenty of opportunity to provide input on the revised draft, but in this resolution, there's no room to blame anybody else if the program fails to launch. A few weeks ago, y'all didn't like the original resolution, and the Hart members quickly went to work updating the resolution to address the issues you raised about structure and funding and partnering with existing city partners, and the revised resolution, which you all had a chance to provide input on, addresses these issues, but it doesn't cut out the unhoused. So I guess y'all couldn't support it. Several of you have asked a bunch of questions that the public speakers already answered the first time around, if you were paying attention, but let me answer a few of them briefly. The, how many co-response calls could the alternative response team handle? All of them. The co-response team has said that they haven't had to use force on any of their calls. And how will we pay for it? As I said earlier, it pays for itself in savings. And, and this was addressed by somebody else, too, but what kind of inpatient facilities would be needed? The whole point of alternative response is that you don't have to take people to an inpatient facility and use that hospitalization or arrest folks and take them to jail. It's difficult for me to wrap my head around the way this council operates sometimes. I can't tell if y'all just want to prevent any protections and support for the unhoused, or if you're just petty and you don't like it when the community points out your mistakes.
That's right.
Thank you.
Okay, council members, that concludes the three public speakers on this. Ms. Parker?
Thank you, Mayor. I will not take all of my time. I hope that we have reached a consensus on the last agenda item. And you all can see the differences between the two resolutions. This resolution sets the date for a public hearing, but otherwise is, is pretty much in alignment with Vice Mayor Roberto's resolution. It also highlights some of the partnerships that we have in the community around street outreach and other services. But other than that, it's pretty much in alignment with the vice mayor's resolution, sets a public hearing, and I hope I have your support on this resolution.
Yes. As I mentioned in some of my comments, an essential piece of information about a dialogue between Helen Ross McNabb and Hart hasn't occurred yet. I think that was something that was necessary for me to have some clarity about how a resolution like this should be made or crafted, and because that conversation hasn't happened yet, for whatever reason, I am not going to vote either yea or nay. I'm going to abstain. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Councilmember Fugit?
I just have a clarifying question, and I'm sorry I can't remember. Did both, I know this resolution talks about the, the mayor's pledge of $50,000, I believe.
It was a pledge to match.
To match $50,000. Match $50,000. Was that also in A? I can't remember. Yes.
So it is, and a lot of the same language that's in A is repeated in C, but if I remember correctly, there is differences, there are differences in the wording for the $50,000 that we just passed unanimously versus what's in this resolution.
What, I, that's not my understanding.
Ms. Fugit?
I'm just trying to figure out if you combine both resolutions, is that $100,000 that has to be matched, or is it the same $50,000?
Ms. Gil, do you have some?
Sure, I'm happy to provide some clarity. So I think the matching language, which is really important to us, is kind of the administration to say we are willing to put some money on the table. That is important that it is matched. So I do see it in both, so I think that was correctly copied over. I think one of the differences that is related to funding is around a reaffirmation of a commitment to support an increased, or excuse me, a continued increase in the percentage of the city budget dedicated to addressing the root causes of societal ills and advancing trauma-informed services as expressed in Resolution 18, 118, 2021. I don't know off the top of my head what that resolution is. Ms. Parker, maybe you can speak to that. But I'll, I'll take this point just to emphasize the importance, as we enter a conversation around this, to understand that, you know, part of my role is to understand the complexity and the constraints of what we do with our city taxpayer funds, and recognizing that, you know, I live in the city, I pay my city taxes, I pay my county taxes, and I support the state sales tax. And so in understanding the importance of cross-jurisdictional funding, that the constraints of our city budget are such that we need to acknowledge that any new program has to be in partnership with those additional funding streams to be successful, and I think we've hit on that point quite a bit already, but I want to emphasize the importance of that as an expectation as we enter any type of conversation.
Thank you, Ms. Gil. Any other questions or comments by council members? Councilmember Singh?
Yes. Councilmember Parker, can you elaborate on the community meeting? What do you imagine the structure to be? Is that something that can happen at the, when we have a city-county workshop? Or do you want something separate? What's your idea?
We have a little bit of guidance in our code of ordinances around public hearings, but it would be a public hearing, and the date is suggested in the resolution. I have a start time of 6:30, which is a little later than we're used to, but the idea being that it's a, that it will accommodate a broad portion of our community to be able to participate in that public hearing, but it would be an opportunity for those who are, who see a benefit of, of alternative response, and also those who would be opposed to an alternative response, an opportunity to come forward in a forum and share their arguments for why and how they feel the city should move forward with alternative response or not. But it would be separate from a workshop.
Any more questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Oh, one abstention.
Two abstentions.
Okay. Two abstentions. Okay. Next item.
11D is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a lease agreement with Bogani Properties to lease, for lease of space within the Emporium Building located at 100 South Gay Street and 110 South Gay Street at an annual rental cost not to exceed $498,294.14 in this first year.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Councilmembers, I just want to point out, this is yet another example of how we support the arts. Excuse me, you're interrupting the business of the council. If you want to talk, go out to lobby. Anyhow, we know that finding affordable space for artists to work and display their wares is a big challenge, and that's why this agenda item helps support and continues the city's long support of the art space at the Emporium. This is 28,000 square foot location. It's, I'm sure you've all been there, and houses galleries, it's home for the Arts and Cultural Alliance. I believe Lisa Zenny, I'm not sure if she's still here. Oh, there she is. Well, just want to commend Lisa and your team for being such a strong coordinating and effective influence for promoting the arts in our community. This, the art, you know, people come here for jobs or education, but they stay for the culture and quality of life, and the Knoxville Arts and Cultural Alliance is a big part of that, so I wanted to thank her, and their offices, of course, are in that Emporium as well. Are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
11E is a resolution to effect annexation of a parcel of land situated in the 9th Civil District of Knox County, Tennessee, to be within Ward 25, City Block 25, 916 of the city of Knoxville, Tennessee, abutting the eastern right-of-way of Dresser Road, being approximately 5.29 acres, known as all of Tax Map 122, insert O, Group J, Parcel 00201, this day known as 2920 Dresser Road, and to approve a plan of service for said area.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
11F is a resolution to effect annexation of a parcel of land situated in the 6th Civil District of Knox County, Tennessee, to be within Ward 47, City Block 47665 of the city of Knoxville, Tennessee, abutting the eastern right-of-way of Sabre Drive, being approximately .64 acres, known as all of Tax Map 120, insert N, Group D, Parcel 03100, known this day as 7624 Sabre Drive, and to approve a plan of service for said area.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Vice Mayor Roberto?
Just a quick welcome to the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no further questions, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
11G is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Superior Pavement Marking Incorporated for the 2023 pedestrian and bicycle pavement marking project for an amount not to exceed $206,620.75.
Second.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
11H is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Sanders Pace Architecture LLC to provide professional architectural design services for the outdoor Knoxville Adventure Center re-roofing project for an amount not to exceed $41,400.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
11I is a resolution authorizing the mayor to amend the contract with Henley Roofing Company for the arson investigation building re-roof project, increasing the contract amount by $32,618 for a new contract total of $171,318.
Second.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
11J is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Henley Horn and Associates Incorporated to provide grant writing services for the Safe Streets and Roads for All Grant Program for an amount not to exceed $34,898.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion's been made to approve and seconded. Councilmembers, this is part of the Vision Zero goal, that you all unanimously endorsed that goal to eliminate traffic deaths and serious injuries on Knoxville streets, and items J and K work to advance that public safety goal and also connectivity, sustainable and equitable mobility. So thank you for the support of, of that Vision Zero goal. I want to thank Brian Blackman and the entire Vision Zero Steering Committee, who helped get us to the point where our committee can put forth a strong proposal for this federal opportunity. And also, Mr. Evans wanted to assure all of us that, that is using current budget on, well, that's the next item, but these J and K items go, go hand in hand, so thank you for your support. Any other questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
11K is a resolution authorizing the mayor to apply for, and if awarded, accept, a Safe Streets and Roads for All Grant from the United States Department of Transportation in the amount of $10 million with a local match of $2 million to assist the city in its efforts to eliminate traffic deaths and serious injuries on city streets.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
11L is a resolution authorizing the mayor to accept a grant from the Hartford in the amount of $10,000, which will be used for the purchase of educational materials to teach Knoxville's children about fire safety and prevention.
Move to approve.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
11M is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a sub-grantee agreement with Volunteer Ministry Center to provide an amount not to exceed $32,564 in HUD Emergency Solutions Grant Funds and $39,245 in Homeless General Funds for a total contract amount not to exceed $71,809 for the provision of rapid rehousing and homelessness prevention services.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
11N is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with the Knoxville Leadership Foundation to provide an amount not to exceed $60,000 in 2023, 2024 Homeless General Funds to provide homelessness prevention services through its Compassion Coalition Program.
Move to approve.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
11O is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a sub-grantee agreement with the Knoxville Knox County Community Action Committee to provide an amount not to exceed $105,608 in HUD Emergency Solution Grants Funds for the provision of rapid rehousing services through the Homeward Bound Program.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion is made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? I want to thank the various providers on these agenda items for being here in case there are questions. Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
11P is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a sub-grantee agreement with the Knoxville Knox County Community Action Committee to provide an amount not to exceed $60,000 in CARES Act Supplemental Community Development Block Grant Funding to support its Homeward Bound Program.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
11Q is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a second amendment to agreement number C-22-0147 with the Knoxville Knox County Community Action Committee to extend the term and to provide an additional amount not to exceed $1,300,000 to provide transportation that meets the needs of residents in responding to and recovering from the COVID-19 pandemic for a period ending September 30, 2024.
Move to approve.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Councilmember Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to thank CAC for the role that you play in our transportation in our community, particularly as part of CAT Reimagined and the changes. We won't be able to support everybody in our community without you, so thanks for that.
Thank you. Councilmember Thomas?
Yeah, just a quick echo to that. Y'all provide services where the
Yeah, just a quick echo to that. Y'all provide services where the gaps are apparent. CAT does a wonderful job, but there's places that they can't go, and you guys do. So just want to know that you're really appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no further comments, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
11R is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documents necessary to apply for a grant award of $65,000 with no required local match from YWCA of Knoxville and the Tennessee Valley as a subgrant, excuse me, a subaward of the United States Department of Justice Office of Violence Against Women Firearms Technical Assistance Project Pilot Sites Initiative to support addressing the challenges with implementing domestic violence firearm laws. And if such application is approved, authorizing the mayor to accept such a grant award.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Councilmember Singh?
Yeah, I just wanted to speak on this. I've been working with this as well. And at this point, whenever there's an order of protection, and we know that somebody has weapons, there's nothing that we can do. But if they've been convicted, all they have to do is sign an affidavit that they do not have a gun anymore. And so this is putting some teeth into it, and I think it's going to keep a lot of families safe.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
11S is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with the Boys and Girls Club of Tennessee Valley to provide an amount not to exceed $260,000 in general funds to support programs which engage Knoxville youth in life-enriching programs and early workforce readiness activities.
Second.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. McFadden, for being here. Next item?
11T is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Lake Shore Park Conservancy in an annual amount not to exceed $50,000 in order to provide administrative budgetary support for managing Lake Shore Park.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
12A is an ordinance to amend the Knoxville City Code, Chapter 22.5, Articles 1 and 2, to implement updates for land development.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Oh, we have someone signed up to speak in favor of it, Mr. Bentley Marlowe, item 12A.
Hey, Bentley Marlowe, 322 Douglas, 7837921. After many, many years, we've making some progress now with the Ward map, and I encourage you to support this. It's not perfect, but it is far better than what we're currently working under. And I again urge you to support this, please.
Councilmember Ryder? Yes, I'll be brief, because I know it's been a long night. I've had several, at least two, three different meetings, phone and in person, with Director, former Director Cannon, Director Claybo, Mr. Chris Howley, I think was here somewhere, but maybe we ran him off at this point. He's still here. Okay, he's still here, but hiding somewhere where I can't see him. I just want to say, I really, on the behalf of the many people, approximately 30-some percent of the existing lots in the city that are impacted by this, I want to appreciate you guys' time and willingness to embark on some changes. It's going to give some people relief. I appreciate your time. I had a great meeting with you last week to finalize some of this. And I want everybody to know, because, you know, some people question, well, why isn't it this, and why isn't it that? I'm still around for two and a half more years, and so what I said was, if this doesn't get us quite there, then we'll talk about additional changes. We went through specific examples of constituents that were holding back on pulling permits until we made these changes. So we went through those examples as well. I'm not going to keep everybody up all night talking about all that stuff. I'm happy to talk about it if somebody wants to, but hopefully this will give some relief to some, what I would call bad housekeeping practices that were allowed in the past, that allowed people to create lots that weren't platted. And some of them are going to be able to still remain that. They're not actually platted, but they will be able to, within reason, as long as they're not building on their lot lines, they will be able to go forth and get permits. Because what, the languages that we're changing, the previous language was, thou shalt do this, and be reflected accurately as a platted lot, to be able to get a permit. So we're fixing that language in these three things, or two. So I'm appreciative. I'll be watching. People will still complain if it doesn't work out, and I'm happy to continue working to tweak it, and I appreciate that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a long, drawn-out speech I'd like to give. This is a big deal. Makes a lot of difference in people's lives to work on their properties. It's a big change. I know it's not without some concern. Thank you for sticking with this. It means a ton. It's just, it's, it's a little bit bold, and I just sincerely appreciate it. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith, and Councilmember Ryder. I do want to echo or add to the note of gratitude to, you know, Tom Claybo and Chris Howley from Engineering, and Peter Ahrens and your team from Plans, Reviews, and Inspection. And all of these things are extra complex, because they require legal review and changes. So I want to thank Mr. Swanson and the Law Department for-
Thank Lisa Hatfield. Don't thank me.
Okay, Lisa Hatfield was the lead lawyer on this. And we have expertise in the city and long experience with land use issues and zoning. And so I'm really proud that we are able to move forward with that. And thank you, Ms. Ryder, for continuing to push on this and be part of the solution. Any further questions or discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
12B is an ordinance to amend the Knoxville City Code, Appendix B, Zoning Code, Article 17.3.1e, non-conforming lot of record, to provide clarity with respect to development on lots created by deed, and to provide additional flexibility in limited situations upon approval by the Department of Engineering and to Article 2.3 definitions, relocating the definition of lot of record from Article 17.3 to Article 2.3. City of Knoxville, applicant, all districts.
Move to approve.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Mr. Marlowe, you signed up to speak to this. You can have up to five minutes.
I'm Bentley Marlowe, 322 Douglas, 37921. Again, I urge you guys to support this. It's been a long time coming. It's not perfect, but it's much, much, much better than what we've been working under, and it will go a long ways towards making it easier to build housing, and that is the goal. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions or discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
12C is an ordinance appropriating the sum of $3,000 from the community empowerment budget and donating same to Canvas Can Do Miracles in support, rather, to support summer arts programming and an end to course exhibit for opportunity youth.
Move to approve.
End of course exhibit.
Yeah.
End of course exhibit for opportunity youth.
It didn't make sense.
Second.
Any, is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Okay. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We have four people signed up for public forum. Mr. Tim Clowers, are you present? Tim Clowers. He left. Rick Roach.
Gone.
Gone. Tina Sparks.
Gone.
Tom Ruggles.
Oh, Tom.
Okay, that concludes public forum. Without objection, this meeting is adjourned.